Seven o'clock.
All right. All right. We'll call the meeting to order. This is our Andover Planning Commission meeting and Board of Zoning Appeals for December 19th, 2017. Rule call.
Lynn Heath.
Brian Lindaback.
Bill Schnaber.
Gary Israel.
Alex Zarchin.
All right. And we'd like to welcome Alex this evening. This is his first planning commission.
Yep.
Very good.
Thank you.
Yeah. We do have some minutes from the November 21st meeting. If everybody could take a look at those that were here and if everything looks in order.
That was a long meeting.
It was a bit longer.
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes from the Andover City Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals from November 21st, 2017, as outlined here.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
One abstention. And we have our residential development report. The only thing I saw in here was a little question mark on our Decker Kaiser apartments. I thought we might change that at some point in time. I think that might be outdated now that there's some other units going in out there. Any other committees or staff report items? Les?
We have nothing new tonight.
Okay. All right. Well, it looks like we have a little bit of a business to attend to in the matter of assigning a vice chair since our vice chair is no longer with us.
He joined another committee.
He did. Anyone want to volunteer? Billy, you've been secretary for a long time.
I have. I'll go ahead and volunteer as vice chair.
Okay. And
I'll second it.
We might need a replacement secretary now.
I think Gary would have been excellent for that.
All right.
I could do that.
All right, Gary. Well.
And I'll second that one also.
Okay, we have, we have a
Two motions and seconds.
Two motions a second. So we'll have Yuri Israel as the secretary and William Schnaber as a vice chair. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We have our first item. It's item case number Z 2017 dash zero six. This is a public hearing on an application filed by Wapachon LLC to amend the Teradyne General Preliminary Planned Unit Development Plan to create a new parcel one B and to change the zoning district classification from the present R two, single-family residential district, to R four, multiple-family residential district, and to allow 125 multiple-family dwelling units and a swimming slash tennis court, racquetball, or similar recreational club activities located at the northeast corner of 159th Street and Teradyne Street here in Andover. So the applicant desires to amend the Teradyne PUD to allow 125 unit age-restricted apartment complex and an indoor tennis facility west of the clubhouse and north of the Highlands Townhome Development. And a petition has been filed with the opponent, for opponents of the Teradyne neighborhood has been submitted and, but fails to meet the criteria for a sufficient protest requiring a three-quarters majority vote at city council because two of the signatures are from outside the notice area. Staff knows no reason not to approve the amendment pending input from the public hearing. Sure. So at this time, I'd like staff to give a synopsis of the presentation of what has been presented to, to you in light of this.
I think you've covered the application pretty well in explaining what the proposal is up on the screen. You can see, you can see a graphic representation of the areas. That particular graphic is what's allowed there today. Back in 2006, there was an amendment to the PUD that added some uses to the area of the clubhouse and to the northwest towards the maintenance building to allow 30 lot line, single-family dwellings. And it also added the permitted use of a hotel addition to the existing clubhouse. If you could, Craig, go to the more recent. This depicts a conceptual layout of the proposed apartments and tennis facility. To the bottom of the sheet is the Highlands at Teradyne Townhouse Development. To the right, southeast of the proposed development is the clubhouse. To the left, northwest of the proposed site is the maintenance building and directly to the north is the Kansas Turnpike. If you would, Craig, go back to the one that you passed by. This is a depiction of the applicant area. I think this is fairly important because if you'll go back and think about that first slide that was put up there, parcel one A. Okay, back to the next one, Craig. Parcel one A, there has been proposed to be subdivided down into a parcel one A and a one B where the maintenance building and the clubhouse would remain in parcel one A and a new parcel one B would be created for the proposed apartment complex and tennis facility. Now, if you could go back to that again there, Craig, you'll also notice that the boundary was straightened up between parcel one B and parcel two where the townhouses are. It's very confusing. That's why I had the applicant make this exhibit just so we understood the area that we're talking about and how it overlays on what's existing today. There is a lot of information in your packet. I apologize for that. We did receive a traffic study, a drainage study. As stated in the memo, there was a petition circulated amongst the neighborhood. Brian, the key there is that all but two of the signatures on that petition are from outside of the notice area. The notice area in this particular case, because it's amendment to a planned unit development, is 500 feet for those properties within the PUD. 200 feet outside the boundary of the PUD in the city and 1,000 feet outside the boundary of the PUD in the county. So you'll notice there was only something like 18 notices that were mailed out because the majority of the notification area was either golf course or large agricultural tracks.
Okay.
North of, north of the Turnpike and that area?
Correct. The notification area would cross the Kansas Turnpike.
And so, in summary, there's been some changes to some parcels, boundaries primarily, parcels one, one A and two. And then the proposed parcel we have is going to create a new parcel one B with portions of areas that are formal parcel one and parcel one A and two. And then we're going to change that classification of that new parcel to R four. And we're going to limit it to 125 multifamily dwelling units. And it will be, it'll also allow for swimming pool, you know, racquetball, tennis amenities of that sort. And we'll change a lot area from, required from existing 3,000 square feet per dwelling unit to 2,000 square feet per dwelling unit. And to change the minimum yard requirements to allow for zero setbacks. And to change the required parking areas from the existing two parking spaces per unit to be 1.6 parking spaces per unit. Well, I know there's a lot of folks here tonight to hear this case. We'd like to have a few ground rules. One, that we'll have a presentation by the applicant and then we'd ask that we limit the time for each person that wants to speak to five minutes. We'll have a list circulated around to help organize that, that speaking time. And, you know, if there's new facts, I would encourage you to present new facts and not a reiteration of the things that have already been said. So I think that will be very helpful for both your time and our time. We do have some housekeeping things to go through here. Are there any disqualifications that are needed? Nope.
None here?
No.
None here. We have notified this case in the, according to the secretary, that a notice of this hearing was published in the Butler County Times Gazette on November 25th, 2017. And notices were mailed to the applicant and 18 real property owners of record in the area of notification on November 22nd, 2017. And I'll declare that 20 days has elapsed since that time. And unless there's any evidence to the contrary, anybody present here, I'll declare that proper notice has been given to this case and that we can hear it. Has there been any ex parte communication on this item?
None.
None.
No.
No.
And none here either. So if everybody understands, I'll have the applicant come up and then we'll also have time for some public comment. So at this time, I'd like to hear what the applicant has to say.
Well, first and foremost, thank you very much, everybody, for the opportunity to at least present what we feel like is, is a development that will be absolutely beneficial for the city of Andover, the neighborhood and Teradyne Country Club. Just to first give a little background to how we started this.
Excuse me? Could you give us your name?
Oh, sorry. My name is Banks Floodman. I work for a company called Sunflower Development Group.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And so the process started a little over a year ago. I met with some individuals from the ownership group of Teradyne. We were, we were looking at land in the area. And this specific parcel had been for sale for about five years. And so we discussed what are the objectives and how do we implement those into a development that we think is sustainable and will help the surrounding areas? And so I think it's important to note that the purchase price of the land is the purchase price, but it also accomplishes the goal of Teradyne Country Club decreasing its, its debt with the objective to, you know, offer some additional amenities to the, the current members of the club. I think it's also, you know, important to note that this facility embraces Teradyne and the goal is to have everybody in this facility be a member of Teradyne. We want this facility to generate revenue for Teradyne. We want, we want Teradyne to stay private. We want Teradyne to flourish like we know it can. And so from that point, I'll kind of go, go ahead and go through the presentation. I don't know if there's a clicker or something. So again, this, this first slide is, it really just sums up kind of who we are as a development company. Done a little over $155 million worth of developments. Kind of outlines some of our current projects and some of our experience with senior living. Now, it's important to note that one of our partners who will also be a partner on this deal, individual's name is Mike Rain, and he's done a number of these 55-plus living communities that have been very, very successful. I'll kind of walk you through that. And hopefully, my objective here today is to have a conversation and hopefully answer a lot of the questions and concerns that individuals do have because I promise you we would not be here if this was a project that we would, thought would be detrimental to the community. There's no way, shape, or form I would be here. I'm from the area. That would, that would not happen. That's not something I believe in. So again, it's, it's extremely important for us to, to work with the key stakeholders, the constituents, those being mainly the city, Teradyne, and the neighborhood to create a luxury apartment complex that is an asset and, and again, create that common interest, which is obviously ensuring the long-term, long-term success of Teradyne Country Club. Inject 120 to 125 high net worth individuals. These are not going to be cheap rental apartments. They're not going to be section eight. These are going to be high-end apartment complexes. A high-end apartment complex is valued right now at a little over $24 million, but we'll, we'll get into those further details here shortly. Create amenity, a package. I mean, we all know it. There's a lot of smart business people in this room. If you can create a competitive advantage and you can offer amenities that no one else can in the market, then you have what we believe is an extremely successful project. And we, so those are the, some of the amenities that we feel like separates this and creates a very, very successful development while incorporating Teradyne throughout that process. Again, you've seen it, but that's, that's the parcel we're kind of talking about. The, I think the, the PUD did a better job of showing that exactly, but that kind of gives you an idea of what we're talking about. This is, you've seen this slide, but it's, again, it's just a breakdown. The tennis facility, those, that, the indoor is not going to happen immediately. The focus really on our end is the, is the multifamily aspect of the, of the complex. And again, something else that we feel like is very important, and you'll see it in some later pictures, but how do we embrace and how do, how do we, you know, create that colonial style architecture that complements it and creates some dramatic, fantastic views as you're playing on the golf course and exiting the golf course as well? That's just a colored version of kind of the layout where we're thinking the pool would be, et cetera. Kind of gives you an idea of some of the landscaping. Again, creating a first, first-class destination. And then that's the architecture we're looking at. Very colonial style, very in line with the country club itself. Just some further pictures, kind of showing the entrance, which would be, you know, just to the northwest of the country club. This is, this would be a view from the houses on the east side of kind of what you're looking at now in the, the luxury living facility. Just kind of gives you an idea. That's just some further information, some distance, et cetera. Now, what I wanted to do is also, I didn't want to stand up here and just have a conversation about Teradyne and what we feel like this facility does for Teradyne, the neighborhood and the, and the city, but also give some comps, real-life scenarios that enable you to kind of grasp it and make it a little more tangible. This is, this is Lions Gate in Kansas City. It is a private golf course. It's a fantastic golf course with, with multifamily in very, very close proximity with very high-end homes, first-class living. This is Mission Farms. I wanted to have a comp that, that wasn't on a golf course. The homes, this is a kind of a newer area in Kansas City, just off Mission Road and 435. You can see there's a lot of retail space and there's a lot of apartments, high-end luxury apartments, not garden-style, plain apartments. I think that's very, very important to differentiate and explain that these are not going to be that low-end apartment. These are going to be upscale. And you can see here, just to the north, there's homes all lined up right there that, that range anywhere from 700 to well-north of a million-dollar homes. And they've done a good job of incorporating the neighborhood and the surrounding areas. This is, this is in Lawrence. This is the Jayhawk Club, which is currently being built. This is just, again, another example of, you can see the clubhouse. It's kind of in the center of the picture there. The multifamily just to the north, again, high-end multifamily. And, and some of the homes that actually surround the entire, the entire complex. You can see some homes there on the, just on the south side of the picture. These are just pictures of what we anticipate the interior would look like. Again, this is appealing to 55-plus active living individuals, individuals that probably still work full-time but don't want the maintenance of a house and want the flexibility because they may have grandkids in the area and they, and they like to be closer, but want to golf, want to go out and, and enjoy, and enjoy life. Here's some just additional pictures, the high-end finishes. Again, I keep going back to it, but luxury. That's, that's exactly what this facility is going to be. All parking in the facility, we are, is going to be located to the west. We want to ensure that this, you know, limited visibility from the golf course. Obviously, I've talked a lot about ensuring long-term success for Teradyne. We feel like this complex helps that and creates additional revenue that will keep Teradyne private. Unit for Teradyne members, that's an idea we've thrown around and just, just really to give you an idea of the things we're thinking about outside the box to ensure that we are crossing and, or checking every box and exploring every opportunity that could be available. And what that is, is, is possibly holding back a unit that would engage existing members and allow families, et cetera, in town for the holidays to possibly stay in one of the, one of the units and, and enjoy time closer to their family. Economic value, those are just projected numbers at this point in time. $500,000 a year in new revenue for the city. And we know onsite jobs will be roughly four to seven and then impact fees, sewage impact fees, some of those things will be over, over $50,000 annually. I talked about the importance of the colonial architecture and embracing that and bringing that into the facility. We all agree that that's important. I think we all like the look of Teradyne Country Club and appreciate it. These are just more amenities that we constantly are going through and, and that will be a part of the programming of the facility. This is just estimated project cost, just shy of 25 million. We have received a couple bids so far and we're right in, in line there, so we feel, we feel good about that. Ensuring this will not be section eight housing, I know that's a term that's been thrown around. I think that's been very important to, to address and understand that there are additional approvals. I've talked with, with the city, there are additional approvals that need to take place for this to be any sort of section eight housing. That will not happen. That will not be a part of our development. One thing I think that's also important to note, there are developers out there that their, their mentality is to build something and, and flip it as soon as possible and not hold on to the asset for the long term. That is not the way that we've operated. We look at this as a long-term opportunity to work with the constituents that I mentioned earlier. Understanding the building setbacks, I think it's important, you mentioned the zero setback. The front would actually be 20 feet. The only spot that there will be a zero setback, and Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but is on the south side where there's actually a cart path in between any of the homes to the south. So that cart path will stay in place. We just tried to butt that up as close as possible, knowing that we had a buffer already established in between. Dog walking area, we don't want people to walk their dogs on the course. We want to keep them off the course and create an area on the west side that will enable them to walk around. Restricted access to the course. Do everything we can to prevent people from walking on the course. When people aren't playing, that's going to be hard to do, but, but that will be our objective. In this facility, you would be required to have 80% of the tenants, 55-plus. You can have more than that, but you're required to have a minimum of 80%. And so we would anticipate, obviously, meeting that threshold and, but possibly allowing some individuals that may be a little younger, 50, 48, 49, that fit the criteria and the, and the tenant that, that we are looking for. I think it's, here's some, what this will not be. This project will not be a daycare, preschool, rehab center, halfway house. And actually, it could be a halfway house the way that it's currently zoned. I made sure I checked with that with the city as well. It could currently be a halfway house if the R two zoning. Will not be a hotel. We think the highest and best use for this, and what we're proposing is much greater than a hotel. Hotel with, I think, right at 100 keys could be built in that area currently. The traffic study came back. Very, very limited impact to the neighborhood, giving the separate entrance. Recommends an additional outbound, westbound lane exiting Teradyne, which we would obviously include in the development. City's plans to expand 159th, we fall, fall very nicely in line with the development. And overall, based on the study, the impact per vehicle will be roughly six tenths of a second per day. Again, this is just a summary, but our objective after we go through this process is to talk through it, meet with individuals, and work closely with the stakeholders to ensure that we are, we are pursuing and developing a project that the, the city, the neighborhood, the country club will be proud of for years to come. And that's all I got. Thank you guys for the opportunity.
If you could just maybe hang tight there, there might be some questions we may have for you. A lot of information here, but do you guys have any questions?
Not at the moment.
Banks, when you talk about a social membership, does that allow individuals that are renting here to use the golf course or is that?
No, they, they will be held by the same social standards that they're currently have for the membership. Have access to tennis, swimming, but not golf. You'll need to be a full member to, to golf on the course.
Okay. And if I had a membership and I had my own golf course or golf cart, is there a place for me to park it there?
There, there will be parking garages around the facility. If you choose, you can, you can park your, you can choose between your golf cart and your car. We'll let you determine what, which way you'd like to go with that.
So I couldn't have both?
You could. I mean, i- if, if available, we will allow individuals to have two garages, but we anticipate that probably those garages would go relatively quickly.
I don't know if this is the time, but Les, I was looking at the, their proposed layout and I don't know if the fire department's had a chance to look at it. There's only one entrance in and out of that property. Is that any concern to the fire department that if, you know, something should go on? It looks like they'd have to drive through all the parked cars.
That is definitely something that I'm sensitive to as the fire chief. Les and I have talked about this, of course. I would have to defer to the traffic engineers. You know, I can give you an example of how sensitive we are to this. When we were dealing with the building that's going on south of there, even late into the process, Les and his office were very helpful to help us change how that entrance is built. If you'll remember, when that first If you'll remember, when that first plan came to us, it had a, I believe it was a fountain in the center. And the folks that drew up the plan said that we could fit our fire trucks through there. We did some investigation and found out that we could fit our fire trucks through there, but we need to get through there in an expedient fashion. And Les's office was very helpful in making sure that that change got made. If we were to run into anything like that, I have no reason to believe that those issues wouldn't be handled just as easily.
One question we did have and we worked through is fire access from behind, to the rear of the facility. I think our objective, and according to code, you need to, you need to be able to get to a hundred-and-fifty feet. There will be access from the, as you can see, kind of on the side, to get within that threshold as well. And Scott, you can talk a little bit about that if you'd like to further. Scott, this is Scott Service, he works for Cobb Alley, he helped us out with the civil engineering and traffic study.
We did anticipate that the concern about the one entrance may arise. And what Banks and I had discussed as a potential option is for the parking lot to the south, potentially looking at gated access strictly for fire and EMS whereby we could potentially have an option to go down the fire lane that's just west of the clubhouse right now and make a paved connection up to that gate that would be a secondary access should there be an accident or some other reason that McLeod wasn't available for access to the facility. So that would be something we would be willing to look at.
The existing fire path.
I might address the fire chief. I presume there'll be much more investigation as if, if this plan were to be approved. But hearing some of those comments, is there anything that you feel compelled to share with us if you think it sounds reasonable or is plausible that would help the audience and us understand that?
Yeah, you know, my biggest concern is that the fire code is followed. And the issues that I would have as the fire chief are handled in that fire code.
Okay.
So all of those things that I need done are prescribed. They don't have a choice.
Yep.
I was, I'm glad he brought up the hundred-and-fifty feet because that was one of my biggest concerns. The last plan I saw did not have a hundred-and-fifty-foot access, so that was an issue we were going to have to talk about as the process continued or if it does. And it sounds like they, they are working on some options. This is the first I've heard of it. I'm not sure that your fire marshal would accept that, but I'm glad that they're thinking about those types of things. That answer your question fully?
Very much, yeah, that was very, very helpful. I appreciate that. Well, that's a very good question. If there are any other questions for Mr.?
Nope, not right now. Not now.
Okay. All right. At this time, I'll, if there's a list that's been circulated.
You can go ahead, have a seat there, sir.
Yeah.
We've got a sign-up sheet at the podium.
Oh, at the podium, okay.
So they can write down their name and their address so we can keep our record straight on the minutes.
That would be helpful, yeah, as well. So if there's anybody that would like to speak on this item, yes, please. Just, we'll start here, yep.
I just have one comment and one question. I think I understand the comment on petitions there. I'm one of the people that went door-to-door talking to people in Terradyne Estates. There were several besides me.
And you, and sir, your name and address, please?
My name's Leroux Gillespie. I live at one-one-two-three Terradyne Court in Terradyne Estates there in Andover. And if I understood right, nobody's petition that didn't live within a thousand feet makes a difference. Did I understand that right?
That's, the purpose of the petition is if it goes on to the city council, then it would take five of six members to pass the issue. That's, that's the purpose of the petition. So it's not that it doesn't count. It's one of the, the, any opposition is one of the seventeen factors and findings in the nature of the opposition. So it's not that it doesn't count, it just, it's not valid right now to force what I call an extraordinary majority at the council level.
Okay, thank you for the clarification there. Well, I've been knocking on doors again, and as you saw on the, the previous petition there, there were seventy-nine owners of homes out of the hundred-and-one in Terradyne Estates that objected to rezoning this for a variety of reasons that are listed on the petition. And since then, I've gotten some more there, and we're now up to eighty-three homeowners out of a hundred-and-one that object to the rezoning there, again, for the same reasons there. I have seven copies of this, which I'll leave with, I guess Dana, are you the one that would take that, so that you can have that there? The point is, there's overwhelming objection from the people who are what I call most immediately affected by property values and traffic that object to this in the area there. We did not go to all the homes. Homeowners are gone in some cases and not all the spouses are available, but eighty-three homes and eighty-two percent is an overwhelming majority of the community, immediate community that object to changing the zoning.
Can you just make sure I understand the numbers a little bit? Is it eighty-three, there's a hundred-and-one homes. Are you counting eighty-three, like husbands and wives or kids or...
No, homeowners. There are multiple, some of the wives weren't around or the husbands weren't around, so I'm talking about owners of eighty-three homes, at least one of those owners have objected there.
I just noticed some, both the wife and the, and the husband both signed, so they, you're not counting that as two, you're counting that as one?
That's one.
Okay.
I listed also the number of, total number of signatures on there, and it's something over a hundred-and-thirty residents there, owners in one sense of the word or another. We eliminated any renters there, they were just owners, and we went house to house. I'm trying to write quickly here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
If I could have the next person raise their hand, I'll, I'll take you on the inside Again, if you just give your name and address, for the record, that'll help us keep things
My name is Catherine Ewing, and I live at eight-one-eight North McLeod Circle, number two-zero-one. I have with me a letter from several neighbors in the Highlands at Terradyne who are against the rezoning from single to multifamily that I just wanted to present to whomever.
And just so we're all clear, that's, the Highlands is the joint, joined housing.
Due south.
Due south, okay, very well.
Okay. Yep. Gotcha.
And yes, thank you. Go ahead, yep. More paperwork. If you want to just hand them to me, I'll, I'll distribute them up here if you care.
There's, take one of them, one on top.
Very good. Take one and one on the top and one on the bottom.
My name is Cindy Ball. I reside at nine-oh-eight West Terradyne Circle in Andover. My husband and I have lived in Andover for thirty years, and we've had a business here for the same amount of time. I would first like to bring your attention to the single sheet that I gave you. Pardon my quacky voice. This is a copy of your own zoning regulations that has to do with the amendment of a PUD. I would like to point out in number two that it says, "An application for an amendment shall be accompanied by a legal description of the area in the application, as well as the name of the owners, and shall include the names and mailing addresses and zip codes of all the owners of real property within the PUD district and all the property owners within the following prescribed measured distance from the perimeter," which you can read that distance for yourself there. I was provided by a copy of the notices by city staff, and the only notices sent were to the prescribed distance from the perimeter. None of the owners of the property in the PUD, as prescribed by these zoning regulations in Terradyne Estates, received a notice. The request before you this evening is not simply a request to change zoning on a piece of vacant property. It is in fact to amend the planned unit development or PUD. City zoning regulations, of course, allow for the possibility of amendment to a PUD in Article Four, Section one-sixteen-G. But only after a public hearing such as this. It goes on to clarify that the hearing shall further the mutual interest of the residents and the owners of the PUD and of the public in the preservation of the integrity of the plan as finally approved, and to ensure that modifications, if any, in the plan shall not impair the reasonable reliance of the said residents and owners upon the provision of the plan. Not result in changes that would adversely affect public interest, the enforcement and modifications of the, of the provisions of the plan as finally approved. My husband and I, like most, if not all, of the hundred-and-one homeowners in the PUD, placed a substantial amount of reliance on the PUD when we made a decision to build our home at nine-oh-eight West Terradyne Circle just seven years ago. Like most people, our home is one of the largest financial investments that we make, and we thought long and hard about where we wanted to make it. We chose Terradyne Estates because it was part of a PUD, and we knew our neighbors would be single-family homes in a neighborhood that continues to maintain the value of its The majority of the homeowners in the Terradyne Estates have signed a petition opposing the change to the PUD. Terradyne Estates has an active homeowners association, which continues to ensure the enforcement of the covenants which keeps the area in excellent condition. We recently went to the expense to hire a professional management company to ensure the continuation of those efforts. Terradyne Estates continues to be a much sought-after location for new families moving to the area. Many homes have recently been purchased by families with school-aged choo, school-aged children. The rare home that does come on the market is quickly purchased by a new family. Homeowners, new and existing, are choosing to invest their money remodeling to update their homes as needed. I share this with you to point out that even though the original PUD was signed in nineteen-eighty-six, this neighborhood is not growing old or deteriorating, but in fact continues to be a highly valued and excellently maintained development. We purchased or built our homes here based on the fact that we would be living in a single-family residential neighborhood and not adjacent to multifamily housing. The market study completed by the applicant states, "The neighborhood surrounding an apartment property often impacts the property's status, image, class, and style of operation, and sometimes the ability to attract and properly serve a particular market segment."
Pardon me, your time has expired. Does the bench wish to grant her a few moments to...
Yeah, yeah.
Wrap it up?
Sure.
I maintain the reverse...
Just a minute, I need a motion, a second for that.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Lynn and a second by William. All in favor, say aye.
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 I maintain the reverse is true as well. The impact of an apartment building will negatively affect our property values and we'll virtually stop the completion of the condominium development on South McLeod Circle. Contrary to the information in the market study, which states home values in the area of a hundred-and-seventy to two-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars, the appraised values of homes in our neighborhood exceed six-hundred thousand dollars. We depended on the PUD when we made our investments in our homes. This change will indeed impair the reasonable reliance of the said residents and owners upon the provisions of that plan. There are multiple instances where constructions of multifamily apartment facilities constructed, constructed adjacent to or near family homes has resulted in the decreased market values. Mr. Banks-Fledman stated in his presentation to the city council on November fourteenth in marker twenty-nine forty in the minutes, "As long as you go luxury-high-end, the correlation is not negative toward home values." Now, if you take it down a notch and have a nice multifamily prob, and not have a nice multifamily project, then it absolutely will. Sorry, I got a little dry mouth. According to the applicant's own market study, when comparing their proposed project to seven similar projects, two of which are within four miles of the property, their rents are the lowest of all. All of these projects are similar to be, to the one being proposed, all have similar amenities, and yet the applicants, the applicant doesn't project that they will even be able to require the same rent as the existing properties.
Excuse me, I've given you an extra two minutes, unless there's the will of the body to continue to hear.
I think we can give about a thirty seconds around.
Yeah. All right. And a motion, please?
I'll move.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 I've given you the documents out of their market study showing the comparable rents. You can read those for yourselves. I will jump ahead to what I believe is one of the most critical parts of this plan. There are two, two big issues left, and I hope that you will take the time to read through what my presentation, that I'm not allowed to present. The street access has got to be the biggest issue here. There is, in one portion of their plan, it says they're going to enter the property from the eighteenth fairway, that was from the market study. The traffic study now says that it is only accessible from one-hundred-and-fifty-ninth Street on McLeod Circle. McLeod Circle is not a local street, it is a private driveway. It is owned by the Highlands adjacent to that. I've not been able to find any place that there has been anything made to make that usable by the developer. I've talked to everyone that I could find in the Highlands development, and none of the owners are aware of anything that's at agreement that has been made to allow them to use that. This property is virtually landlocked. The other big issue that I have is that this project is not at all in compliance with a comprehensive plan. I've given you several instances in the comprehensive plan that state, along with the R-four zoning, that multi, multifamily housing should be adjacent to arterial streets and not open onto driveways.
Excuse me, out of fairness, out of fairness to the rest of the, of the folks here tonight, I'd ask that you please give them a, a chance to speak. We've given you a little bit of extra time and I do appreciate...
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Do appreciate that.
There's a lot to cover in this.
I know.
There's a lot of issues, it's really hard to cover it all very quickly.
Yeah, I...
We, murder wire, yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, do we have another speaker that would like to speak?
Okay, do we have another speaker that would like to speak this evening? If you could raise your hand. Yes, sir, please come up and please sign up and-
Nobody else does, but I will, a quick question for you.
Please, just, yeah, wait.
Your name and address, please.
My name is Bill Downs. I live at 823 Bramerton in Andover, in Teradyne. So, I'm opposed to it as well. I'm not, I don't have the facts that this lady has, so I do have a procedural question. She has some real good data here, right? Not allowed to give it because of time for other people that want to present. Nobody else that I'm, raise their hand, so I did. How much time do we each get?
We stated five minutes at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry for missing it. So, I'd like to yield my five minutes to that lady. Fair?
That's fine with me.
Fair. Come back up here with your facts. Thank you.
Please hold your applause. This is not the time or place for that. Thank you. And just for the record, I mean, we're trying to make this fair so everybody has a chance to speak and speak their mind. It's not that we're trying to cut her off. We're not trying to, you know, keep people quiet. I mean, it's out of respect for the whole community here, so we do appreciate you yielding your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. The applicant has made a request to rezone an area to be called Parcel 1B from its current zoning of R2 single-family to R4 multifamily. According to the City of Andover zoning regulations, Article Four, 104, this district, being R4, is designed to provide multiple-family development at medium densities where such uses may be located along arterial streets and some collector streets, and also used as a buffer around business districts. This district is not intended generally for single-family type use, except incidental to the area. In considering the requested change, the board must consider each of the seventeen factors from previous case laws that you are aware of and have done many times before. The first three or four items have to do with current zoning and current use. R2 allows for single-family residences, churches, golf courses, schools, parks, and any special use or conditional use in R1. R4 allows for all of those uses and single-family attached to, three, and four-family dwellings, multiple-family dwellings, boarding and rooming houses, adult and childcare center, and preschools. Additional special uses include many storage facilities, hospitals, medical and dental offices, and health clinics, multiple dwellings for the elderly and nursing homes and convalescent homes, rehabilitation houses such as halfway houses. So, that's an additional nine uses for R4 over R2. When asking yourself if this zoning is appropriate for this property, you must include all above uses in your consideration, because they are not asking to build a certain project, they are asking for R4 zoning. We have been presented with a proposed project that has been touted as an upscale apartment with high rents. Its rents are the cheapest of comparable properties in their own market study. This developer has no proven record of ever completing such a project. Please consider that if this developer does not proceed with the project, changes the scope of the project, or fails to and sells the property later, there is nothing city zoning regulations can do to require this project to be built and maintained as presented. If you approve this zoning, the property will be zoned R4, not for just an upscale apartment building. The variance is requested. R4 zoning is described in our regulations as providing multifamily at medium densities. The applicant is asking for variances to the R4 zoning, and instead are requiring 3,000 square feet per dwelling. The applicant wants to reduce it to 2,000 square feet per dwelling. This is a 33% decrease in the land, and would result in a 50% increase in allowable apartments. I've showed you the math.
Yep.
Reducing the required land per unit decreases available green space, forcing residents to seek recreation outdoors on others' properties. The applicant wants to reduce the number of required parking spaces from two to 1.6. That eliminates one out of every five required parking spaces. They also want to build a parking lot in the required front yard and side yard. Reducing the required spaces will force overflow parking onto the adjacent property owners and streets. In addition, they are requesting zero setback along the Highlands at Teradyne and Reserve A. That would mean they could build up to the property line. Building on a property line does not allow for maintenance of your own property without infringing and trespassing on your neighbor's property. This does not seem to represent a high-end development, but rather, a developer who is considering only their financial interest and not the adjacent property owners. The traffic study goes on to state that the proposed apartment building and tennis facility will generate 1,020 vehicles per day, an increase in traffic sufficient to cause them to recommend total reconstruction of McLeod Circle, which belongs to someone else. As a part of that reconstruction, it is recommended that McLeod Circle be relocated to align with a connection across the street on the west side of 159th. Additionally, they are recommending that it be changed to three lanes, one inbound, two outbound. Clearly, there is not adequate access for this type of use. It is questionable whether it could even be constructed, given the property is owned by others. In all other multifamily developments in Andover, there are at least two accesses for emergency vehicles.
Your time has expired again. Yes, sir.
My name is Barry Anderson. I live at 812 Bramerton Street. I'm very interested in what Ms. Ball has to say.
Okay.
And I would like to yield my five minutes to her.
Thank you. I'm sure she-
That's okay.
Yep.
You can just stay sitting over here, you know.
Finally, I would like to address item 14. Is the request for zoning changes in conformance with the comprehensive plan, and does it further enhance the implementation of the plan? By its own definition, the 2014-2023 Comprehensive Plan for the City of Andover defines the general location, character, extent, and relationship of future land uses. I have quoted, most of these are quotes from the plan that I have attached so that you can see where they've come from in the plan. The comprehensive plan has a lot to say about multifamily housing and where it should be located. In fact, it is very specific where multifamily housing should exist in Andover. One of the first things the comprehensive plan does state is, "The recommendation promoted in the U.S. 54400 corridor study are maintained in this plan. The ideas and recommendations that came out of that study were and continue to be considered major drivers for the future economic activity of the city. The comprehensive plan maintains the recommendation of the U.S. 54400 corridor study that between 1,340 and 3,300 new multifamily dwellings be constructed within the corridor over the next five decades. The plan recommends two additional locations for multifamily housing to support housing choice and affordability. These include the medical village node along 21st Street Corridor and the retail node at Andover Road and Central." The plan goes on to further state, "In all locations, including PUDs discussed, multifamily housing should front on a true grid-street system rather than on roads and parking lots." In discussing zoning decisions, the comprehensive plan states, "A key determinant in approving the change is whether making the change would move the city closer toward realizing the land-use vision described in the comprehensive plan." This request does not move the city closer, but rather is an example of spot zoning without planning. Clearly, the proposed project is not in compliance with the comprehensive plan, and it does not further enhance its implementation. As a property owner and taxpayer who have relied on the PUD approved by the governing body of the City of Andover and the recommendations of this board, we request that you vote to deny the applicant's request to amend the PUD. Thank you very much.
I do have a question for you. You mentioned spot zoning. I think, I find that a bit intriguing, because this property to the south is a variant of multifamily housing development. It's a, I believe it's R6, which is the Highlands property, and that's R6. And then across the street, I know this is Cedric County across the street, but that's multifamily housing as well. So, I definitely take issue with the fact that we're calling this, or labeling this as spot zoning, because there are certainly other activities in this area, the commercial endeavor at the Herbert House and amongst other things. This is a PUD with multiple different kinds of housing districts, and I think that's very important to understand in this case. This case is not unique for golf course properties. I think the applicant showed us some good vision of where there's other cases like this. There's a number of cases here locally that I'm familiar with, but I think it's inappropriate to characterize this as a spot zoning issue, and I guess I might ask that you respond to that.
This PUD was filed in 1986, and it has been amended several times since then. All of the amendments have been approved and passed. All were R2 zoning. It was my understanding that the Highlands is still R2 zoning with zero lot lines.
It has a R6 allowed uses. Is that correct? Okay, well, I-
The golf course is an R1 use, along with the golf club. The PUD was in place since 1986.
Sure.
It was never discussed or recommended in this PUD that it have multifamily housing.
Well, okay.
But the-
R6 is a multifamily, is what I'm telling you. It's a multifamily housing district already there.
It was my understanding it was still R2 zoning.
Les, could you address that?
Well, you're both right. The underlying zone is R2 single-family residential. However, the planned unit development allows all of the permitted uses in the R6 condominium zone. Condominium, of course, is multifamily housing.
And let me question to you, Les. The 2006 PUD that, in this relationship here, that does allow for 100-unit hotel to be added to the property existing?
Correct. That was on that parcel that includes the clubhouse-
Right.
...and a portion of the golf course and maintenance building.
Okay.
Which is the parent parcel of the majority of this applicant property.
All right. Any further questions of the speaker? I know that she gave us a lot of good information-
Yes.
...to chew on and to understand from the neighborhood standpoint.
I don't have any questions for her.
Okay.
Thank you again.
Excellent information. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to, yes, please, please come forward, state your name, and so forth?
My name is Ben Keis. I reside at 903 Teradyne Circle in Andover, Kansas, and my wife has a lot to say, and so I'm going to yield my time to her, but during this time I'll pass out some papers that she has prepared. Thank you.
Here you go, young man.
Hi, my name's Megan Keis, and I reside at 903 Teradyne Circle. I've given you guys a couple of reference sheets, which I will quickly address. As you all know, we're here this evening to voice our opposition to case number Z2017-06. We purchased our home in 2012, in part to escape the heavy traffic on the 21st Street Corridor, on the Wichita side of Andover School District.
Do you have another copy of this? Give it to this old guy here. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Sorry to-
Sure, sorry. Never would we have purchased our home had the Andover PUD zoning adjacent to the Country Club Golf Course we now reside on been zoned R4. The thought of having apartments to the entrance of our neighborhood as our children get older and begin driving is of concern as the increase in traffic throughout the neighborhood as they walk to friends' houses and ride bikes. Also of the utmost concern are our property values. Our home, as Cindy said, like many others, is our biggest investment. Our home was very outdated when we purchased, and we have completed countless projects to enhance and add value to our home. Teradyne is quickly growing in popularity among young families planning routes in Andover, which is apparent by the short time homes are available on the market. The rezoning of the PUD to allow rental apartments or any other R4 facility adjacent to the golf course will undoubtedly have a negative effect on this building momentum and property values, which I will discuss. The opposition is based on the zoning regulations of the City of Andover. The back page, I have a copy of this, and I won't go through the zoning in the interest of time. One of the zoning criteria, number six, states, "Do adequate sewer disposal and water supply in all other necessary public facilities, including street access, exist, or can they be provided to serve the uses that would be permitted on the subject property if the change in zoning was approved?" I've reviewed the traffic study provided to the city by the developer. If you review the November 14th city council meeting at marker 2050, Mr. Floodman stated, "Traffic and drainage study was done to ensure there are no implications from a traffic or drainage standpoint." The market study done by Sunflower Development states on page four, "Under drainage, no specific tests were done, but appears to be adequate." The traffic study on page 11, which I have referenced as page A I've given you, "Under proposed site access characteristics, discuss drainage as. I am not a surveyor, nor am I an expert in site drainage. I am informed by the client, however, that approximately 6.44 acres of the site will drain towards KTA, while 0.58 acres will drain towards 159th Street. Close coordination with the plan to enclose the drainage on 159th Street is recommended. Tying in the drainage of the 0.58 acres to the storm sewer system is advised to prevent ponding on public roadways. It gives no recommendation on how to address the 6.44 acres of runoff onto the turnpike." I had checked with Dana at the city for a further drainage study, and she had told me it was not provided, so I have no other information on that. There are, however, several key factors mentioned and overlooked in the traffic study contrary to the above statement made by Ms.- contrary to the above statement made by Mr. Banks. The first being the code used to provide the appropriate estimation of trips generated. The proposed developer has gone out of his way to state this will be a very active 55-plus adult living facility, as he did this evening. At the November 14th City Council meeting, and I do have minute markers referenced in interest of time, I won't note them, Mr. Floodman states, "These are active individuals still working full-time." Contradictory to the fact the traffic study references the proposed apartments as independent living in the Land Use Code 252, Senior Adult Housing, to estimate vehicles per day. I have referenced that on page B 1 through 3. You can see that traffic figures. There's also no guarantee these units will remain active 55-plus living if the building is sold in the future. Both factors to consider, which will undoubtedly increase the number of vehicles per day in contrast to the senior housing formula the traffic study estimates. Even with the numbers for senior housing used, the proposed developed, used by the developer, the traffic study recommends McLeod Circle needs to be reconstructed. And since Cindy discussed that, I will skip ahead.
Your time has expired.
And that version, his both.
Okay, you want, okay. All right, we got five more minutes.
Thank you. The last issue with the traffic study I'll address is the fact in section 2A, as I've stated above, there's no mention of golf cart traffic. Not only will McLeod and the adjacent sidewalks be used for all motor vehicle and pedestrian traffic of an apartment complex, it's the only means of travel for Terradyne Country Club, maintenance carts, mowers, as well as golf carts to access the tunnel taking them under 159th Street. And that area is to the south, which would be the zero lot line that- McLeod Circle will not be able to accommodate the change in the PUD from R two to R four zoning. Factor number six in the guidelines outlines public service should the apartments not succeed five to 10 years down the road and be sold, and use a standard apartments. Impact on schools, Cottonwood Elementary specifically, would be significant. I've gone on, as you see, to address EMS access, and I feel like that's been covered this evening. Number nine states, "Is the general amount of suitable vacant land or buildings available or not available for development that currently has the same zoning classifications?" I have listed three changes to square foot per dwelling unit, the zero setback. And item number six they have listed is the change in required parking spaces from 2 to 1.6. All three of these reductions in the city of Andover zoning standards make Andover the community as today, and they need to be upheld. It speaks to the fact the land is not suitable for the proposed apartment building and R four zoning change. By the city's own zoning standards, the building as presentable, as presented, is not suitable for the land. The fact there is not enough space to dedicate one garage to each unit is of concern. If you ask experienced senior living developers, as I have, they will tell you seniors like garages for every apartment and lots of parking for friends. As the developers mentioned several times, this will not be assisted or even independent living. Parking will need to be same as any multifamily ratios with added garages to be marketable. Even more so to high-end consumers, there's no contingency for overflow parking. If this facility, as I've stated, is not successful and sold and becomes standard multifamily apartments, parking will not be adequate, as it would for single-family R two home sites. Thus, should not be zoned R four as requested. Number 11 states, "Is the subject property suitable for current zoning?" It is suitable for the current zoning, R two. Currently, the city is in a legal suit with this landowner, Wapinsaw, over the zoning of two lots at Central and Glendavon. While that specific case has no merit on the PUD amendment to this land, it is important to recognize the fact the owners are willing to sue a lawsuit to build two single-family homes shows the desire for a golf course, single-family, custom home site. Home sites the existing R two PUD in question this evening is zoned for. Couple that with the fact Ritchie Development just announced a new high-end housing project, Brookfield, speaks to the fact single-family homeowners are buying right now. There is no need to change this parcel to R four. Where else on the east side is there a golf course, single-family, custom home site? It would be a shame to amend the PUD to negate this unique capability for Andover to attract families planning routes with the potential only to increase adjacent home values. Comprehensive plan of Andover is taken into consideration in factor 14, and Cindy has addressed that. Number 16 states, "Are there any informational materials or recommendations available from professional persons knowledgeable on this request, which would be helpful in this evaluation?" In the November 14th Council, City Council meeting, Mr. Floodman spoke to the knowledgeability of the architecture firm ACI Boland, who is working on elevations and plans for the proposed apartments. Same council meeting, Mr. Floodman states, "ACI Boland has done many of these types of developments." Contradictory to the statement he makes six minutes later of, "This is untested", in referring to the apartment complex proposed.
Your time has expired.
My name is Shirley Anderson. I live on 812 Bramerton. For the record, I think the petition was relevant with 82 homes out of 101 that signed, so I think it's a significant number. And then also for the record, I disagree with Mr. Banks about providing benefits to Terradyne members because actually it's taking away our chipping green, so I don't think it's a benefit. And I would like to address from the amendments, the issue on number 12, "If the change in zoning were approved, would the uses what would be permitted on the subject property be compatible with the uses permitted on other property?" The use right now is for single-family home use. It would not be compatible with what it was zoned for originally, so it would, no, this is a no. And then on number 13, "With the change in zoning as requested, be consistent with the purpose of the zoning district classification and intent and the purpose of these regulations." It would be no because the zoning intentionally was for single-family home ownership, not rental property, and that's what it was zoned for. And moving to item number 15, "What is the nature of the support or opposition of the requested change in zoning?" For the record, I'd like to say this room is full, and I'd like for all the people that are opposing to please raise your hands. And that's for the record. Thank you.
My name's Trent Brown, and I'm at 628 Glendavon Court. It's gonna be hard for me to bend over. I've been in real estate for 15 years. I've been a supervising broker for Keller Williams for 10 here in the Wichita area. I have sold a lot of homes in Terradyne, many of whom are here. I did a little bit of research. I understand we're not comparing apples and apples and apples, but the apartment complex that's at Central and 127th, if you go onto their website, they do advertise that as a luxury apartment complex. And so with pulling up comparables that have sold in there over the last two years, because I didn't know when that apartment complex was built, so I just went back two years and found six properties that have sold in that apartment, or excuse me, in that Crest Lakes subdivision. It was a little nervous as far as, you know, being in this industry, I see a lot of subdivisions with a lot of properties that are selling. I, of those six, let me back up. Of those six properties, there were a couple properties that were not adjacent to that apartment complex that did sell, all of which sold in 2010 when that subdivision went in. Yes, they have increased in value, some, you know, not substantially, but some very minimal. I've got them all here. Some sold for 310 in 2010, turned around, sold for 315. I guess that's one of my concerns as a homeowner in Terradyne. I know when I purchased my house in 2013, I've done nothing to it. Some would say I've even made some changes and not redone landscape and so forth, but, which I'm working on. But I've seen the increase in my home go from 272 to 302 in four years with me doing nothing. So it is a concern, you know, and I've got one property, you know, again, that is adjacent. So I think with this, this is not relevant to my house, for example, being across Terradyne. This would be a concern if I was a homeowner in the Highlands addition. Being that this property sold in 2010 for 340, it turned around and sold in 2013 for 310, and then it sold again this year for 307. And that was a property located at 526 North Woodridge, which does back up to that apartment complex. So, no, I'm not going to sit up here and say it's gonna, it could or couldn't. I can't predict. If I could, I'd be a millionaire, but I think it is a concern for the property owners that are adjacent to this property as far as, you know, what it could do. So, and then one other issue I had or concern is I have, you know, being a parent with two small kids, a four-year-old and a 10-year-old, they do live across the street. I understand it's Cedric County, but they do live in those duplexes, and so, you know, they utilize the tunnel. So it is a concern to have kids going back and forth and, you know, additional traffic, so.
Mr. Chairman, I think we have, since he has some relevant real estate experience, I did have a couple of questions on the impact of the value, and I don't know if anybody else wants to talk about it in here or not, but what do you think the average value in Terradyne Estates? Do you have any ballpark?
I would say that the original part of Terradyne around where I live, on Glendavon over to Bramerton, probably range anywhere from about 275 to about 370. I think if you go up towards the end of the cul-de-sac of Terradyne, I think you're going to see homes go from probably minimum 375, if not four, to probably five, 550, 600. And I did sell a property on Terradyne Two last January that was, I think it sold for, if I remember correctly, 420. And I know another homeowner that bought one in there in the last couple of years at around 480-ish, so.
I looked at the county's appraisals, looked at all 81 properties, and in certain blocks, they were just under 300,000, probably in the front area. Back closer to the course that you're talking about, it was about at 345 on average. There are some 500, 600,000 dollar homes. There's also some lower than that.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think if we're going to look at actual property values, we probably need to explore that. I have, and that's what I find the county has it at. And I know, I don't know if we have fee appraisal information in here from anybody that someone's gone out and done an actual fee appraisal. The other thing I would mention, yeah, your property values have gone up, and that's in spite of the fact that the club value and the golf course dropped 2.4 million dollars in 2012. So I guess I'm wondering why those values stayed so strong. I mean, what would be anybody in here's, and I would guess I would ask a wheel eater, why did those values stay so strong in the face of the course?
Are you talking resident?
Yeah.
I think one reason is supply and demand. I know over the last three years in Wichita, we have definitely been in a seller's market. I have mentioned to people in Terradyne that I've got two or three people that a house goes on the market, and I've got buyers for it already. So Terradyne especially is of high demand. Just, I think we're seeing a lot of homeowners that now have kids out of high school and college that don't want all that room. And I've sold, I was back there adding it up, I've sold seven homes in the last two years in Terradyne, all of which are young families with kids.
So you're not saying firmly, I mean, and I'm not just talking about his suggestion, I'm talking about anything that's built in Andover within this suggested zoning, that it would drop the values? Because if the course dropping two and a half million dollars in value didn't impact it, you know, I think we've had some high standards for development, whatever you're talking about here. That's what I'm trying to get my arms around when we talk about a drop of property value. What I would suggest, sir, is the difference between 1/27th in this location is the city of Andover itself. Lower crime, better community, we, higher incomes. The fundamentals of this community make it very, in my opinion, very difficult to see huge drops in income. So I think when we're talking about property values, I mean, in values, this is about how much the gain will probably be in this community regardless of what you put. Because the hotel itself has had, excuse me, the club itself and the golf course have had problems with value dropping, and, but yet the residential moves on. So, you know, I think our community's fundamentals are what make it, what made it grow.
I would agree with you. I can't predict, you know, what our values are going to be. All I can go back is, you know, I know the owner of our company, Gary Keller, projects every eight years, you're going to see a shift in the market. He's written a book on it, 2008. Now here we are about eight, nine years later, we're going to see a shift. So I think you're going to see, which will affect property values a little bit. But, you know, no, I mean, I think of, you know, you asked me, do you think my value of my house is going to be affected by this going in? I would say right now, no. Would it affect people adjacent to it? I would probably say yes. You know, I think the unknown is probably the concern to me is, you know, because, you know, the proposal's great, and I know my opinion doesn't mean anything. I just, I've got a lot of concerns about the need of an apartment complex for retirees over the age of 55. I just, I don't see it. I don't see, you know, I'm looking at my parents, and I'm looking at, I just, they don't rent, so, but, you know, that's, that's my opinion.
Okay. Well, I just, you know, I hadn't had an opportunity to ask anybody about the values, and you seem like you have as much knowledge as anybody in the room probably would have.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Gail Mayfield. I live at 912 West Terradyne Circle. And first of all, I didn't really come prepared to speak, but I am a licensed real estate broker with the state of Kansas. I've been doing real estate for 17 years in this area. And I just wanted to speak a little bit further with regards to when you're speaking about values. First of all, Trent's right. We cannot predict what the market's going to do. I will tell you that Terradyne, part of the, you know, yes, do our values stay on a level ground? Yes. Have some of them dropped? Yes. Not every home up there that has sold in the last five years has sold at tax-assessed values. Some of them have sold at less than that. There are homes that need updating, same scenario, same process. Why the golf course values can, as you mentioned, went down, yet the residential values tend to go up? You're comparing apples to oranges. The golf course is not a residential home. So your value, your value on your land, land is, you know, take everything- So the, your, your value, your value on your land, land is, you know, take everything, wipe everything off, and alls you have is the bare land, yes, it has a value, but your use is what, what also has to come in reflection when you do assessed values. So when you say the golf course has lost value, yet all of the homes in Terradyne have increased value, then you're, you're not, you know, you're not being fair to us as residuals. Also that, you know, the assessed values, everybody knows, your assessed values in Butler County go up almost every year. I fight my taxes. I take it all the way to.
And that's what happened in this case. The club fought their taxes.
You know, so I'm just, you know, so, you know, I just wanted to try to, you know, get you to understand that, do I, you know, can I tell you that this is going to affect the value of my home right up front? No. I mean, I would be a millionaire too, you know. But from being in the business in the area and knowing what land use can do, and because, you know, let's face it, Andover is growing. It grows continually, which is a good thing for Andover. But changes in land use will and do have effect on property values. Sometimes those effects are to the positive, sometimes they're to the negative. But going in on ground level, there is nobody that can tell you what's going to happen. I will tell you that as a homeowner there, I would prefer that there not be apartments, multiple-use, rentals-type property right down the street from me. I think it will hinder when my home goes on the market. It will eliminate a large majority of buyers. Part of the appeal for Terradyne is, homes very rarely do go on the market up there, so when one does, if it's in, ready, in condition, ready to sell, it will sell at a good market value and it will sell at a reasonable time. What's going to be put forward down the road, not, it's not going to affect it next year, two years down the road, this project isn't going to be built overnight. Five years, ten years from now, there's nobody that can tell us that whether that's going to be to the negative or the positive. I don't live in a home of the value that mine is, and mine is up on Terradyne Circle where the upper, more higher assessed homes are at. I don't live there because I wanted to live in an upper-end home. We, we built our home there because we like Terradyne, we like the location, we like the whole stability of what the Terradyne community brought to us as homeowners.
Do you think if the club had financial difficulties and the value continued to drop, that would have an impact on the residential values? I mean, if we, if we got, if, because it has had some struggles.
I can't, you know, any of us that, that, in the area, whether it's Terrady, and we can, and most of us that have spoke here tonight are speaking from the, what is known as the Terradyne Estates, which is the first area that was developed, Terradyne, what, Terradyne Two, which is, which are the homes right off of Terradyne and one-hundred-and-fifty-ninth. Those homeowners are probably going to be affected more directly than, than we are. Now, that being said, anything that happens to the golf course is going to affect all of us at some level. I mean, that's, you know, that's the community we all chose to either build or buy into. So yes, anything affecting the golf course is definitely going to have some kind of effect on us. But what's laid out before us here right now is a change in the PUD. And if you changed that, and I know it's been, I know there've been amendments, I know it's been changed before, we had a big packed house when they wanted to put the motel in, and they, you know, you know, and it, it was finally, you know, put to the wayside. But if you change that, you're changing, changing the PUD is what is before you. It's not, you know, changing that is, is simply writing it down. It becomes written in stone that that particular parcel now is R4. Then this whole process starts over as to who and what is going to actually be built there. Right now, if I, it's, and we don't want it changed to R4 because we don't want multiple-use land that we really are going to have. Once that happens, then we have no control.
I, I have one more question for you. I know we've had some questions here, but have, have you had any experience in, say, like Tallgrass with this, you know, there's a apartment complex right smack dab in the middle of Tallgrass, and I know it's been there for years, and I just wonder if you've had a inclination of, of property values around that and how it's, have it's helped or not helped?
I, I apologize because I really, I knew that there were several people that had put together the information that I would have, so I really didn't, I come prepared to speak until, you know, it got a little further into here. Tallgrass, Tallgrass as a total community, which is when you say like a golf community, which Terradyne is, market values in around Tallgrass, like some areas, it's fluctuated quite a bit. There are certain areas of the Tallgrass community because it is, quite honestly, it covers a larger land mass than we do. We're not sitting over here on, on, you know, we're limited on, on what's available here. Tallgrass covers almost a square mile, kind of like, like Crestview does, you know. That's not what you're working with here. So when you talk about Tallgrass, they do also have areas with higher upper-end homes. They have areas with what we call mid-level value homes. And then, yes, they, they have condominiums, they have townhomes, and they have the apartments. But where they're all located and where they affect are completely different than what you're talking about doing here because of the landmass that they have to work with when they did it. That's just my opinion. I haven't put together any facts or figures for you.
It was planned that way.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Chris Schramm. I live at eight-one-eight McLeod Circle, number two-oh-five. I can provide a little bit of insight in the golf business. I've been in the golf business for fifteen years. The reason that the golf course was devalued and not the homes is there was about thirty million golfers in the Tiger Woods era, two-thousand-seven peak. Today, there's twenty-four million, twenty-three million. So golf course, the supply of golfers is down, golf courses get devalued, but people still wanted them on a golf course. So that's the reason.
Would they, would they continue to want that or desire that should this golf course go public? If it comes out of a private ownership? I mean, there's a statement, I believe, in the, in the applicant's information here that there's only fifteen percent of membership out of the landowners? Am I, I think I'm correct there?
If you need to get up here and speak to the mic, not, not from the audience.
Being in the golf industry, you're, and a resident, are you aware of that information? Are you, are you a member at the golf?
I'm a member at Terradyne, yeah, and I live at the Highlands of Terradyne as well, so.
Can I ask if there's a show of hands of?
What's the question?
The question is, are you a member at the Terradyne Golf Club? Thank you.
Yep.
A golfing member.
But that's the only insight I can provide, is I can tell you why the golf courses lost two-point-four million dollars in value, but, but why the house prices are there.
Thank you. Ma'am, did you want to address, answer, respond to that? Did someone have a question?
No, I just wanted the national, national study.
If you could come up to the mic, please. Thank you for the record.
And national study, and this, this is from information I gathered three, three, four years ago for a totally different situation. But national studies will show you that in golf course communities, the average is twenty to twenty-five percent of the homeowners actually belong to the club. The rest, you know, it, it's not, I mean, it's not, and not everybody buys a home that's in a golf course community because they specifically want to belong to the club. They buy, they buy in there because of the stability that a golf course community offers.
Thank you.
My name's Chris Della, I live at eleven-twenty-four Terradyne, and I am not a businessman. I'm speaking layman terms here from just being a homeowner. I'm probably as close to this development as anybody in here. I was one of the homes that had the red lines pointing out how far away it is. In fact, if you remember the two photos, one looking at the golf course and then the one with the apartment complex, that's my bedroom, that that's taken from, my master bedroom. So that shows you how close we are. The least of my concerns goes along with that is, yeah, I, I think, like what Trent said, piggybacking what he said, the adjacent properties, which I would consider as one of the adjacent properties, only thing between me and the apartments would be two golf holes. I think that would affect my property value almost immediately. I mean, that's, you can see from the picture what I would look at. Is that the biggest concern for everybody in here and for changing the PUD? No. My view should not be the biggest concern, but property values for everybody should be a big, a big concern. The second concern I have over this is the, the future of where this goes. There's no guarantee how this is going to work. What happens down the road if it's half-full and they decide, we, we can't do this, we're losing money, we're going to sell this, and the next ownership has no obligation to continue the age restrictions, the rent restrictions, rent comes down and, and, and people start flooding in there. That's, that's a big concern for my property value also. Those are the two biggest concerns of property value and then the future of the, of the development. Kind of going, I, I, and again, I'm not, I don't know the business of the golf course. I understand the two-point-four million, but I can say that we've been there for, we're one of the new families that moved in. We've been there for four-and-a-half years. We have put thousands of dollars into our home. We know our property value has gone up. But just speaking of the golf course, been there for four years, golf course is in as great a shape as I've seen it. I mean, it is fabulous. The, the membership has increased, the, the personnel working there are as good as I've seen in four years. I, that doesn't speak to the two-point-four million dollars. I know it doesn't. And it's not the only reason. I mean, we didn't buy the house to join the golf course. You know, we didn't do that. We joined it because of, like what we're talking about, the stability of being on a golf course is, is pretty amazing. So those are all the concerns that I had, and I hope that kind of, it's more of a, just a homeowner's point of view than, than a businessman. Any questions?
No.
No question. Thank you. Oh, thank, I'm just filling this out, sorry.
Yeah, you gotta, gotta fill that out.
Gotta do that. Yes, sir.
My name is Farhan Shadib. I live in eleven-eleven Terradyne Place. I'm there since ninety-four. And like, like everybody says, just we bought here for stability and since, I mean, checking at lands and usage since ninety-four, we always, we were always told this is going to be a single-family home and for the, just next to the golf community and just nothing for the multifamily rezoning. I mean, you mentioned, everybody mentioned about the Tallgrass. Tallgrass entrance is at twenty-first. Tallgrass East State, which is equivalent to us, is from Twenty-Ninth Street. That means you have to go half a mile this way, one mile, half a mile. That's a two miles from other side. You can't compare it to that. And maybe the, if you want to compare it, the lesson is Crestview. Crestview is not building any apartment. Willow Bend didn't build any apartment. You're going to be a laughingstock of a city, I mean, just building apartment next to that. And brings back to the economy, that, there's a thirty lots. If anybody in town wants to build a house next to the golf course, you can do it right now. But there's a thirty lots over there, if you build it, costs around seven-hundred thousand dollars, that's about twenty-one million dollars project, equal, same as the apartment complex. So the, so money issue can be resolved with this. And then, and all boils down to, like everybody said, this is our life, livelihood and our biggest investment in life. So you're, you're trying to jeopardize about hundred-fifty families' life savings for the interest of one person. Is that the, I don't know, is it, maybe that's not a part of the seventeen codes, but that's a reality. So just, I mean, like I said, just, just check that. I mean, thirty single-family golf course, if anybody wants to build a golf, house on the next to a golf course, there's no lots available, but there is, is here. They can do that. Seven-hundred thousand dollars, that's a twenty-one, twenty-four million dollars project right So just, that's, that's my concern, just from, and I'm here since ninety-four.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name's James Riley. I haven't prepared a lot of statements here, but I was gonna, I've been out there since ninety.
Please sit at your address, please.
Oh, nine-oh-nine Terradyne Circle.
Thank you.
I also own nine-thirteen Terradyne Circle. My son owns ten-twenty-six Terradyne Circle. He also owns six-forty-two Glendavon. So it's kind of, it's kind of a family deal, if that makes sense. But I, you know, I've been in finance and investments for thirty-six years. And what I do know is that whenever a property comes in, we talked about how much money I think he had a slide up there that was going to make about five-hundred thousand dollars a year. I believe probably that they're going to go in for a tax abatement, so the city of Andover is not going to receive anything except for paying for the roads, the sewer line, and whatever other accommodations and stuff we have to do to do that. But I believe they're applying for a tax abatement. So I feel like I pay plenty of taxes, and people that live in Terradyne believe that they pay plenty of taxes. Now, for them to come in and get a tax abatement, it was our roads, our pool, our utilities, we got to build that up. And do you believe our taxes are going to go down? Or that we have to fight the city or the county, or Butler County every time to have our taxes reduced? Mine is over nine-hundred dollars a month just to live there in that one house. I'd do about the same in the other houses. So I don't see any approving, anything approving the property value of my homes. I believe the property taxes will go up. I don't believe they're going to be paying any taxes. I think we're going to be paying more taxes in Andover because we're going to be bringing in not fifty-five and older. If Obama passed a ruling that apartments cannot discriminate on where they get the money from. So if you've got someone that qualifies for Section Eight and they come in with a voucher, you can discriminate and say, well, where do you work at? Where do you get your money at? You have to allow them to move in. And if this property does not do as well as fifty-five and older, then you're going to see the property value go down, you're going to see Section Eight people moving in because they cannot discriminate. If they got a voucher, then I, I know of a family, a young lady that's got seven kids that lives in a six-bedroom house, and the government pays eleven-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month. You and I pay that. We also give them food stamps, we do that. Nothing against her, she, the kids got to eat and they got to do that. But I don't believe that I paid the money or were paying the taxes in Butler County to absorb a complex that potentially could be a Section Eight at some point in time in its life, to where I don't believe any homeowner is going to have their house rented out to a Section Eight person ever in the future in Terradyne's, in Terradyne Estates. So I think that.
Mister, and if you're finished, Mr. Chairman, can I just address a few things there? Because there was, there was a mouthful said there, and I, you know, a lot, a lot of facts. The abatement that's being proposed is a hundred percent for three years, and then gradually it'll come on the tax rolls. It's not a ten percent, uh, uh, ten-year, one-hundred percent abatement. It's, it's over time.
I'd like to make one statement there. Mr. Warren downtown went in for an abatement on his Warren Theater, and then he goes back and applies to the city for another tax abatement when he's downtown. So just because you apply for three years doesn't mean you're not going to extend it out five years or ten years.
That would take, that'd be a council decision. Secondly, we are, you know, it, it's, it's not, it's, it's not.
Please.
It's, it's not entirely true that we're getting nothing. There's about six-hundred thousand in impact fees. Now, I do want to say it's really not relevant to the rezoning, the financial impact on, on, on the city. It, when we talk about the abatement next week, that'll be true. We need to, we need to talk. It, when we talk about the abatement next week, it, that'll be true, we need to, we need to talk about those things. Section eight requires the council to approve any, any such, such thing. And I'd also comment, you know, ju, just to finish up, that we've talked to people about tax credit, um, uh, type apartments, and it was for senior housing. And, and the problem they find in Andover is that the values of the property are so expensive that they can't afford to, that, you know, you just, the margins on section eight are so small that they can't afford to pay for the type of land we're talking about and make money. We had one who really wanted a place on one fifty, well, I'm not gonna say exactly where, one fifty-ninth, but the, the, the land was too much. And I think the likelihood of your scenario i- is limited, although again, what we're talking about really doesn't, isn't directly about a rezoning issue. It's, that's more of what we should talk about next week at the IRB. We're gonna talk about the IRB next week, everybody's welcome to come, talk about that as well, but I just wanted to correct a few facts on that.
Well, I, I think on those corrections there, again, I think on, i- if it doesn't stay fifty-five and older, they've mentioned, again, on the repeating that, that one and a half parking spots isn't enough to have a husband and wife that goes to work. So one of them needs to be retired if they can't do that. If they lowered a little bit and they got kids in school, then the kids will be parking on the street or parking on my block to sit back so they can catch the bus so they can go to school. I don't see any benefit for the homeowners out there or Terradyne necessarily, 'cause these are people that are fifty-five and younger aren't necessarily gonna join the clubhouse. I've been out there for twenty years, I've seen, I think, three or four different ownerships of that Terradyne. I've been members of that for a lot of years, not this time, but I've paid and had my ability to have my own golf cart locked in my deal that I could buy mine. Now I can't even drive unless it's the right color. So, but whenever I bought my home, I had a lifetime membership of, of the club and I got to pay the monthly fees, but I could have my own golf cart and drive on that without any, any problems at all. But now that has changed with new ownerships, I understand that. But it hasn't been necessarily positive, and I've got, uh, some vested, vested interest in that area.
Sir, your time has expired.
Well, thank you.
Anyone else? I had a question for the applicant or the owner. With, with regard to the property and, I mean, this thing's been zoned, how many years, nineteen eighty-five, eighty-four, A six? Can you, can you help us understand why, uh, single-family houses haven't been built there?
The way that I understand it is that based on current ownership and what they've tried to do is, is the infrastructure costs don't justify. And the way that I also understand is there are rental houses across the street of one hundred and fifty-ninth. And so the question is, is the demand there for more, more houses? I don't know. But everything that I've heard indicates that infra, infrastructure cost to build the twenty to twenty-five houses is too high, based on individuals that I know that have explored building single-family homes there. That's, that's, that's the extent of the knowledge that I have.
Does the proximity to the interstate have a lot to do with it? It would, it would to me, I wouldn't sort of seek out a property next to the interstate as a single-family resident.
You know, I don't know that for sure, but you could assume that the interstate being that close would probably have an impact on that.
Yeah. How, how about the hotel? You know, the hotel was proposed years ago, it, it never materialized, so here we are today looking at something that's new, uh, help me understand that.
Well, I, I don't understand, I mean, everybody stays at a hotel every once in a while, I mean, it's all about GPS and what's the easiest way to get there off the turnpike or where you're going. This area does not fit the need for a hotel, um, at all. And one thing that's, I think it's important to note, in the comprehensive plan, it talks about housing diversity. And I looked through there towards the bottom of page forty-three, it ta, it bullet points and outlines three, three, the kind of, the highest examples, demand of individuals that are starting to come into the market or currently here. Older residents who have moved to Andover because they wanna be closer to grandchildren. Residents who have moved to Andover for the schools but wanna stay in Andover after their children have left the school system. And single-parent households who would like to stay in the Andover area. I think this facility, it's all about how you can accommodate that demand. I think this facility does accommodate that, but the question I ask is how many people have moved out of Andover in the past that would've stayed here if there was an option like this available? The other thing, the, the last point that I wanna make is, Mrs. Ball was correct, that the, the rents that we have are much lower than our comps. That is because all of our comps had a meal plan, that they provided three meals a day, which drove that cost up exponentially. We want individuals in this fil, this facility to inject in the community. We don't want them to have all three, three meals there, we want them to go to Hereford House. And so that's, that's the last point I'll make, and, and I guess we're ready for a vote if you guys are.
I thi, I think we've already heard you, and I think.
And again, I'm Laruga S V, uh, you got my address here before. You just made the comment, which I agree a hundred percent with. You said you wouldn't want to live next to an interstate. And you are a homeowner and the developer here wants homeowners to move in next to the interstate and put a hundred and twenty-five of them there to hear the traffic noise every day. And I heard the presentation in February, the developer made, and the point to me, I live a quarter mile away and every night I hear the truck noise. Okay? And it takes me a while to get to sleep with the truck noise, and if the wind's blowing from the north, that's with the window shut. I hear a lot of truck noise. With the wind not blowing, I hear the truck noise, the traffic noise. And if you keep your windows shut all the time, you don't hear it as bad. But in the spring and summer, my wife likes fresh air. And so our windows are open and the truck noise is very noisy, a quarter mile away. And for the reasons you just said there, I don't think you can fill a hundred and twenty-five unit system for the exact reason that you said yourself.
I, I would beg to differ, I, I'm not gonna argue with you, I, I would, I, I think there's a lot of, uh, multifamily properties along interstate highways, and they do very well. And I don't see as many single-family houses, uh, doing as well along interstate highways. So I, that's just my observation, I'm not gonna argue, but. Please go to the mic. And, um.
We already know who you are.
Cindy Ball. You made the statement or in your, you may ask a question to the applicant about the existing R-two development that is in place now in the PUD and made a reference to that, that had been there since nineteen eighty-six when the plat, PUD was originally put in place. That is not correct. The R-two that is currently there in the thirty units was only put in place with the last PUD amendment, which I believe was two thousand and six, is that right, Les?
Yep.
So that's only been there since two thousand and six. So I didn't want everybody thinking it's been that, that way since nineteen eighty-six.
Okay.
That is a relatively recent change. With regard to the hotel.
What was it before that?
It was golf course before that.
Is that correct, okay.
With regard to the hotel portion, that is still in place even with this amendment as part of one A, I think it'd still be. So this does not take that away.
All right. If everybody has had a chance to speak, I will close the public hearing part of this, uh, proceeding. All right, seeing that, I'll, I'll close the public hearing. Now is where we deliberate, John.
I'm sorry, I do have an additional question.
Yes.
And that was brought up with the ownership of the driveway that's being proposed that needed to be redone, as far as it being actually owned by Highland Development, and whose decision is that?
They are correct that the proposed driveway McLeod Circle is in a reserve. It's dedicated to use for access, and it doesn't have access controls. I think you're on to a detail there that needs a little more fleshing out when it gets to the plating process.
I think it's important to note that there is a substantial amount of process left, if this case is approved, for them to proceed to developing the property. I mean, there's plating, there's access agreements regarding fire, I presume. There's utility extensions, there's access agreements for this entryway that you're talking about. So I mean, there's, what we're trying to focus on today is the merits of this zone change and how it relates to the surrounding land uses. And, and the things that are out there today.
Yep, some deep concerns.
Got anything else to do here?
I think we've covered all that, it's just up to us to try to hammer out.
Public comments, no other comments, final public, full public hearing, planning commission deliberation. Right. I think my biggest concern is that this property has been vacant for so many years. And here, there's a, a potential user for it, that seems eager to, uh, produce a, a product.
I just wanna say, we can't talk while they're deliberating. We had a chance to talk, the planning commission has to have an opportunity. I got in trouble last time we had a Terradyne issue in front of us and tr, and tried to lecture, but they have to be able to talk without comments going on. They were fair to you to listen to your comments, now I think you should be fair to them to listen to their comments.
So, yeah, I think that, that's, you know, with regard to the, the vacant land and the, you know, the fact that it's, you know, laid fallow for years. There are prac, practice facilities near.
Exactly, that, that was the plan. So it's vacant since two thousand and six, before that it was not planned to be developed. So you need to, you know.
You know, I, it, you, the parcel had, had zoning, uh, regulations on it, whether it's.
Part of the golf course.
Yeah, but it still has a, you can still build single-family on R, R one. So, I mean, you.
Nothing else.
Les, maybe if you could en, enlighten us on the, you know, what you can do on single, you know, I presume it is R one?
We're talking about the property that we're discussing before two thousand and six was part of the golf course.
Again, that gets complicated if we go back to that.
I know.
Zoning map, the majority of the subject parcel tonight, prior to two thousand and six, was part of the golf course parcel. In two thousand and six, the majority of this subject property was zoned R-two, but allowed the R-five zero lot line house configuration.
And Les, who owns the property? Is that part of, Terradyne owns?
Mm-hmm.
The property?
Correct.
And they were the ones who, were they the ones who wanted the rezoning done in two thousand and six?
The owners at that time.
Correct, the owners of the golf course at that time were the applicant that made the change.
Okay.
Okay, continue.
I think the other, the, the other thing that's a mitigating factor is that, you know, the properties are quite a, a distance, you know, over nine hundred some odd feet from that one graphic. I think that's, uh, you know, it's, it's got a clubhouse next to it with a commercial entity, uh, with a, with a fairly substantial recreation facilities adjoining it. This, of course, is to the northeast of it and is directly abutting a, a major interstate that crosses our country. I think there's a lot of technical things that need to be resolved before they, uh, i- if things do materialize, uh, into something more. But I, my personal thought is, I think, uh, this, this property does, um, have merits to become R-four, multifamily for the reasons, uh, I've talked about with the, the interstate proximity to the single-family housing. You've got, um, uh, multifamily development directly to the south of it, yes, it's a different style of multifamily.
My, my concern is what, uh, what I thought about before and what they brought up in the last year. And that is, we approved this R-four for this, you know, fifty-five and over and all that kinda good stuff. And it fails that. And four or five years, they sell it to somebody else or they change their plans, and now they're letting other people in.
And I.
I, the things I got a problem with is, we should have a minimum of two parking spots per unit.
I, I agree with the density.
Huh?
I said, I agree with the density issue, I think.
We should have, um, better access to it for emergency vehicles that will be taken care of by the site committee. But other, biggest thing is, if this doesn't meet the requirement, they can't fill it up under these requirements, then what's gonna happen?
Well, it's still, you can still build a single-family over there.
No, I meant, uh.
But once it starts.
No, I'm talking about after it's already in place.
Oh, after it's already in place.
And they can't fill it with the restrictions they're putting in, what's gonna happen?
It's, in some senses, it's no different than the golf course, the golf course went through numerous, you know, ownership changes. And it still is a.
Apartment building, the golf course is.
Yeah, well, it's, it's an asset that everybody enjoys, so. It, time goes by and things move along and.
That's the problems I'm having with it.
There's a lot of uncertainty with unknowns, you know, you don't know exactly the type of shingle they'll put on it. Uh, that's, that sometimes can be a concern, but you know, there's a lot of things that, that are.
We can look at history.
Yeah.
And believe me, that's happened.
I just, I just see this as being a, a good, a good zoning land use plan from a standpoint, it's next to an arterial street, it's got good access. It's not.
Not really.
Embed in with a bunch of single-family that's directly abutting it.
It doesn't have good access.
The private streets to the south, they have, they have only one a, access way in and out, Les.
Their primary access is to McLeod Circle. There's also an emergency access connection to Terradyne Street on the south end of the townhouse.
And is that gated, the emergency access is gated?
It is to be gated with the completion of the project.
Okay. So there will, will not be, um, this will be the only access point for both of these communities?
Except for emergency purposes.
Except for emergency purposes, okay. Could there be access between, like, the Hereford House property and, and this property?
I think I heard mention of that for emergency purposes. Again, I, I think we're probably getting a little too far in the weeds with that because we've, you noted there is a long process. Plating, site plan review, as the fire chief mentioned, the fire code is going to be very prescriptive to address access for emergency vehicles.
Okay.
Concur.
Well, Brian, I've just been thinking that, comments have been brought up, I brought one up myself about the, if there's any emergency. if there's any emergency vehicles that need to get in, there's only one access, they're driving through the parking lots. I'd like to see that changed a little bit. But if that changes and we start putting a requirement on for at least two parking spaces for every unit, then that starts cutting down the number of units that would actually be there. And at what point does it get to the point where it doesn't become viable for them? You know, if we change it down and they can only get 85 units in there, then is it worthwhile for them to do it? You know, if they were to do the building like they say they would in a colonial style and match Teradyne, I think that could be pretty nice. I think it could also partially be a buffer from the noise from the turnpike.
Certainly.
You know, the apartment building's going to take some of that noise and cut it down from it getting into the golf course and across. But, you know, I live between 21st and 13th Street and between 159th and Andover Road, and I can hear turnpike vehicles, I can hear Kellogg vehicles. I mean, Andover at night, when it's nice and quiet, I mean, you just hear the highways. I don't think you can get away from that just because of our location. So... I mean, this, it's a pretty difficult situation. I used to own a home in Teradyne. You know, I liked, liked living there, but that was many, many years ago.
I think to me, maybe to one point that you had on the 1.6 parking stalls, I think, I, I look at that as a minimum standard. You know, these folks can certainly, if they have folks that, you know, need more parking, they'll find a way to make the, more parking work or they'll have fewer units, one way or the other.
If you're 55, you know, you're probably still married and got two vehicles. And then if you're going to belong to the golf course, you might have a golf cart. So, there's three vehicles right there. Or I may have my motorcycle that I want to put out there. Where am I going to put those vehicles? I know in the neighborhood where I live right now, just about everybody has either a vehicle on the street or one in the driveway because there's not enough parking space in front of their house, you know. Two car garages just don't hack it anymore.
I do, I, I think I did hear them say they were planning on putting garage units in and things of that nature. I, you know, I think that-
Is that going to be above and beyond a 1.6?
Yeah, I don't know that it would, but, I mean, we can ask them.
Well, that's a big, that's a big question.
Mm-hmm.
I still think it needs to be two. If we got garage plus that two, then that's a different story.
I think, I think the, the space that's there limits the capacity of the apartment complex. I mean, it, it, at some point, you just, there's, there's only so much you can do with the, the space there and-
Well, what they got a plan for is this doesn't work and they have normal families move in with, uh, uh, mom and dad and, and a 17-year-old kid's going to be driving and the other things. Now, where's all those cars going to be parked? You know what I mean?
Yeah.
If I could-
Yes, Les.
Mr. Chairman, I, I've heard this unknown mentioned quite a bit. What, what if, what if it's not 55-plus? What if it changes to this or what if it changes to that? Perhaps the application is a little bit too broad and needs to be narrowed down to what the application, the applicant has presented to us.
Is it, if it's sold, does that still apply?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, the zoning regulations always apply.
As long as it's in there, yes, then that, that's a big plus.
And how, how are you suggesting that, Les, as far as the-
Well, I, I think if, if you were to take that unknown off of the, off of the table, it would make deliberations a lot easier for everyone in this room.
As far as the 55-plus or what?
Yes.
Since it's a PUD, we can add restrictions to it.
Absolutely.
Yes.
That would require it to be 55-plus?
Yes.
Okay.
You remember the case we had just a few months ago on Central and 159th? That was for adults only. That's a, a very easy condition to add if you should see fit.
By PUD, you can do that, yes. And that's what this is.
So, beyond the use, we have concerns for 55-plus and parking. Are there any other concerns at the bench here?
Well, like we talked about, that's going to be the site committee and the, and the fire department is having access, proper access for-
Proper access.
And that's a big-
McLeod. McLeod.
The access there.
Okay.
I also just have a little bit of a concern with the main entrance is also being directed around what they're proposing may be a public tennis facility.
I don't know that I would characterize it as public. I don't see anything on there. I mean, the, the access to the site is all via private, private road. The internal, internal streets are all private. So...
But they still have to be able to have access by the fire department, even if they're private streets.
Les, what, what concerns do you have as far as that access goes? I know you have a lot of experience.
We've had some conversations internally here, both with the city engineer and, and the fire chief. We have a report from a professional traffic engineer who's run all the calculations out on trip generation. We're comfortable with those recommendations. As, as far as emergency vehicle access goes, the chief has stated to you that those are issues that will be addressed in great detail at the time of building plan development, site plan review, committee review.
Yep. So, there's a good chance that that entire entryway is going to get rebuilt? Is that-
That's the recommendation of that traffic engineer.
Okay. And presumably, that would roll on through the plating process as well?
Correct. He's, he's stated in his report, and I, I've read it cover to cover. He stated in his report that he relies heavily on the improvements to 159th Street that would add capacity by creating three lanes with a dedicated turn lane, which takes away some of the concern for site distance created by the bridge.
And when are those improvements planned?
2019.
2019?
Which probably corresponds well if this project were to go into construction next year.
It'd be a challenge to get it built by 2019.
Correct.
So, fall 2019 or I guess it, at this point, it really doesn't matter, as long as it's going to be built in 2019?
Correct.
Okay. Does that allay any concerns as far as the access at the bench?
Only thing we need to do is make sure they got two parking per unit. And what's the other one? If that's other stuff, it's going to be taken care of by other people. Anything else?
I didn't count, but how many parking spaces are there right now?
They say 223 on this plan.
223.
And I think they-
1.6 is what they were saying.
And it's 125 dwelling units. If the applicant would care to elaborate any further on that, you're free to, free to approach-
It actually ends up being a little over 1.71 per, per unit.
And you think you can achieve 2.0 if, if we made that a requirement?
Achieving 2.0 would be, would be difficult. You know, we don't see any apartment multifamily. You know, 1, 1.71 is very high. We have, you know, that's 1.71 per unit, I think. Someone mentioned earlier, there's, you know, one per unit. There's, there's much more than that. We have, because you are going to have a lot of individuals that may be single, single parents, live there by themselves, et cetera. But 1.71 is the number we're currently at.
And there, there's a clubhouse next door-
Sure.
-with a large parking lot.
But, 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 but we, we, you know-
I'm, I'm trying to get a feel for what the parking is there. And I guess my, my basis for that statement was, is that there is a clubhouse in that facility, whereas there's not going to be probably as much of a clubhouse on this facility. And so, you wouldn't have a lot of overflow parking, parking at this facility because you've got a large gathering of, of, you know, you know-
We, we put this together based on the 1.71 to ensure that we did not have to utilize clubhouse parking, anything else.
Mr. Chairman, I just did the math. If I'm doing this right, 125 units that, with 223 parking spaces shown, that's 1.784 per dwelling unit.
If we would, if we would stay with the 55 and over and that kind of stuff, I'd say, I think I could-
I can't hear you.
Does everybody understand what I was referring to with the clubhouse? And that there's not necessarily a clubhouse here where you'd have a large gathering of, say, a reunion of, of some sort where you'd need that extra parking? That was my basis for that comment.
Yes.
What I'm saying is that if we save it to restriction of 55 and over, put that into the PUD, then what we, the parking available is, is reasonable. What do you guys think? I can't talk because I got four vehicles.
My only struggles is we're trying to slice it a little too fine. And I think, you know, if we said 50% of, of the property is, I mean, it seems to me that we're really being very specific here, but if that's the will of the committee.
I just am a little concerned, you know, being that specific, I understand that that's what we'd want to see in this, but does that also hurt the marketability of it for, I mean, there's market standards about aging communities, but, you know, if they're having troubles targeting that market, you know, what does that mean for the viability of the, of the project?
Les, I think, did you have a comment?
No.
Okay.
So, if that's set, and a future owner comes in, they can't change that setting as far as the 55 and over?
Not if we do it with the PUD and that being a restriction entered, no. They'd have to come back to us to get it to change. Or the city council, or both.
I'm okay with the, the parking concerns that you guys have. I'm okay with the access concerns because I think they're going to be fixed. I just struggle with the 55, you know, specifically, being very specific with that. It's not that I don't think they're going to market it that, that way. I just think that it, it could, could result in more problems down the line should we, should they, you know, not be able to meet, you know, 100% of that. And so, I think if we did do that, I think we would need to have a threshold, in my opinion, but-
Well, I think we can address, those are three items that have been brought up by the public, by the residents. I think the biggest factor, which is an unknown, there's two of them. One is the viability, long-term viability of a golf course that can't meet its revenue requirements to keep things in the state that they are, weighing that against the fears of the general public on the value of their residence and what adding this to that property will do. You know, we could, you know, these three items here, we can put that in writing and, but you, there's no way you can-
No.
quantify those two other items.
But, this will help because it will more than likely keep it from having a whole lot of families with a whole lot of kids.
I understand, yeah.
And if I had family with kids, I wouldn't want to live anyway, but-
So, I- If those are the items that we're, you know, going to vote on, then I'd say, let's get them in there.
Let's see.
Go through the facts and factors and findings and-
Well, yeah. What was the other thing? Oh, PUD that has to meet the 55 and the restrictions they put down. And we, the parking, the 1.7 plus.
And the, the access is going to be resolved with the, the plating and, and so forth? All right. Any other?
No. Do you want to go through this checklist?
We've, we've closed the public hearing and we've heard from you multiple times. Okay. Please, please come up to the mic, please.
Cindy Ball, how would you resolve the access issue through plating if they don't own the property where the access is?
Access agreements could be put in place. There's any number of things that could be done to resolve that issue. It's, it's, it's a private street. So, whether, whether this is a single-family development up there or multiple family or a hotel, they're going to have the same issues with regard to access. I don't see that the access, I think, you know, if we were putting a, a 400-bed, you know, apartment complex here, I'd be more concerned about access, but we're, there's only, there's limited size that this, this space will, will hold. And with that in mind, I don't, I mean, me personally, I don't, I don't have a, as big an issue on access. I think their geometry is a little odd and hopefully that could get fixed of getting in and out of their property. But I'm sure the fire department will have a lot to say about that, so.
Well, that will be solved.
Yeah, we don't-
Built.
Yeah.
We don't make that decision.
That's right. We're, we're talking about the land use and the compatibility with the properties surrounding it. And, you know-
The big items.
Yes.
But we just got to make sure they're in there. Okay, what does that say that about the 55? What is that? Les? Is that in there proposed?
There's nothing in the zoning application that limits the use to age 55-plus. In the two presentations that I've heard by the applicant, he's mentioned that 80% of the units would be restricted to age 55-plus.
Well, and we also, we want to restrict it and not allow all those other things that's listed on that list that can be put in there.
That's your prerogative.
Yes, that's what I'm bringing up. Where, where, where is, where is that? Look right there. Because we want to make sure we, we, or we can just restrict it to multifamily, this multifamily apartment, 55 and 85% have to be 55 and over. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, through the planned unit development parcel provisions, you could limit the number of dwelling units to the 125 that are in the application. And you could limit the uses to the multi fam, multifamily dwelling for age restricted, age 55-plus for 80% of the units.
Yeah. 80 or 85, 80?
80% is what I recall being quoted.
Whatever.
And the private tennis, racquetball, swimming, et cetera type uses.
And is, is this something that's enforceable from a zoning code standpoint, putting age restrictions and-
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
That's always important when we look at making rules or can we enforce them?
It has to be brought to our attention, but yes.
Okay.
Okay.
We do have 17 findings and factors, if we are ready for those.
I, I think the key here is to ask the applicant if he is willing to accept those additional restrictions.
Absolutely. Could you shed some light there?
Yeah, I mean, that, absolutely. And that's what we're proposing. I said from the beginning, this was going to be a transparent development. I'm not going to propose something and go do something else. Including the parking restrictions. Including the parking restrict, well, to get us to above where we're currently at 1.71, I mean, that's, I don't, I don't see how we get, we get above-
1.71, I mean, that's, I don't, I don't see how we get, we get above that, 1.784. You always err on the side of caution.
How important is that 80% number? Because I know Les has mentioned it a couple of times here. I, you know, you've heard my hesitation for percentages and what's your, what's your stake on that?
Well, I mean, we'd like for it to stick with the 80% above 55. But, you know, baby boomers is a extremely fast-growing population that, and there's a housing demand need for this sort of environment. They don't want to be around millennials. They don't want to be maybe around me and my young kids. But they do want to engage in an environment that's active and, and that are with similar-minded people.
Well, and the other thing is there's a lot of 60-year-old men that have a 52-year-old wife, so there's part of your, or vice versa.
We might be digressing a bit.
Well, no, now, that's what 85, that's what 85-20 comes in.
Brian, I have one more question for, for Les. So if this is an apartment complex and they don't rent out 10, well, let me go back. It's got a proposed indoor tennis facility. That's just proposed right now. And let's say that doesn't come about and they decide that it'd be better off to have dog grooming and a beauty salon and a nail salon, something else in that block right there. Is that permissible?
It's not.
Or can we restrict it that it's, doesn't have those amenities for?
They have to come.
They state related clubhouse or recreational club activities, racquetball, you know, swimming. So those sort of similar things.
I know where he's going. I, and I agree.
But he doesn't, he doesn't want something other than.
I don't want something else coming in there. Let's say the tennis court doesn't work out, but they've got a facility, they've got a building there, and they decide, well, let's subdivide it and we'll have a beauty salon and a dog grooming.
No, I think it's, it states that in the PUD provisions already is what I'm getting at.
The application was very specific on that point.
Okay.
That it's limited to swimming, tennis, racquetball, recreational club activities.
But some women might consider going to the beauty salon a recreational activity.
The, I mean, the multifamily, you.
I can't stretch that definition that far.
Les, it could be, I think if I'm reading this correctly, it could be like golf, you know, a, a building for people's golf carts if that is a, or possibly a, you know, covered parking over there if they so chose. Is that, I mean, this is in the B?
I suppose I could construe the parking of a golf cart to be accessory to either the apartments, the golf course, or any recreational club-type activity.
I mean, a golf cart is a recreational tool. I mean, so I, I mean, and that's in the 1B parcel as well. So I think those, those are all the uses that it specifies. So, I mean, once you go outside those uses for more commercial-type uses, I don't think that would be a, a commercial use unless it's.
Yeah, I just wouldn't want to see something in the future start bringing more people in and it's not, this isn't a commercial development. This is for the people right there and it's recreational.
Yep.
Yep. I think it, it covers it for me.
Okay.
Okay, it's going to ask.
17 findings and factors, if we're ready. No?
Is Bill reading?
I think this would be a good day for Bill to read.
Thank you. Okay. Amendments to change zoning districts. When a proposed amendment would result in a change of zoning district classification of any specific property, the report of the planning commission, accompanied by a summary of the hearing, shall contain statements as to, one, the present proposed district classifications, two, the applicant's reasons for seeking such reclassification, and three, a statement of the factors where relevant, were relevant upon which the recommendation of the commission is based using the following factors as guidelines. These factors and findings, one, what are the existing uses and their character and condition on the subject property and in the surrounding neighborhood? See adjacent use, existing land uses on one and pages one and four.
Yep.
Concur?
Yes.
Yes.
Two, what is the current zoning of the subject property and that of the surrounding neighborhood in relationship to the requested change? Staff, the subject property is owned R2 Single Family Residential District with all of the bulk regulations and permitted uses of the R5 Single Family Residential District, limited to up 30 zero lot line single-family residential dwelling units.
Agreed.
Yes.
Three, is the length of time that the subject property has remained undeveloped or vacant as zoned a factor in the consideration? Staff, the property has not developed since the 2006 amendment to the PUD. The final PUD plan submitted at that time for the zero lot line, single-family homes was abandoned. Concur.
Yes.
Yes. Four, would the request correct an error in the application of these regulations? No?
No.
Concur?
No.
Five, is the subject caused by changed or changing conditions in the area of the subject property? And if so, what is the nature and significance of such changed or changing conditions?
No, other than aging population.
Yeah, that's a big factor right there.
There's.
Talking about me again?
Well, so we could go yes on that?
I probably would have to say yes.
That five?
That's five.
Yeah, five.
Yes.
You keeping track, Lynn?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Six, do adequate sewage disposal and water supply and all other necessary public facilities, including street access, access exist, or can they be provided to serve the uses that would be permitted on the subject property? Staff, no. Adequate public sewer and water infrastructure are available adjacent to the subject property and can be extended to serve the site. The traffic report provided by the applicant indicates that McLeod Circle can be made adequate to serve the proposed uses with minor improvements. Agree with no?
Well, I mean, not presently, but there's a lot of developments. We have, have green projects that, you know, get infrastructure to the site.
I would say this, this question is yes, because it, I mean, we've had a lot of other ones that have the same access and we had it yes. So I don't know. But it's, it's available.
It's available.
It's available.
Not presently, but it could be achieved.
Seven, would the subject property need to be platted or replatted in lieu of dedications made for rights of way, easements, access control, or building setback lines? Staff, an amended final planned unit development plan would be required.
Mm-hmm.
Concur? Yes?
Yes.
Eight, would a screening plan be necessary for existing and/or potential uses of the subject property? Staff, site plan review committee approval would be required. Agree?
Yep. Agree? Yes.
Nine, are suitable vacant lands or buildings available or not available for development that currently has the same zoning as is requested? Staff, no. None are available in the area. Additionally, staff also is not aware of a six-to-seven acre parcel of land in the city abutting a private golf course, which has private club associated with such golf course, buffered by an interstate to the north, higher-density housing to the south, open space, i.e. private golf course, to the east, and a true grid-street system to the west, as called in the comprehensive plan, to serve multifamily housing. Agree with staff?
Yes.
Yes.
Ten, if the request is for business or industrial uses, are such uses needed to provide more services or employment opportunities? Staff, the applicant has provided a market analysis prepared by a professional accounting and consulting firm that indicates a positive need for senior housing. Concur? Yes.
Yes.
Eleven, is the subject property suitable for the current zoning to which it has been restricted? Staff, yes. Concur?
Yes.
Probably more suitable than this one.
Twelve, to what extent would removal of the restrictions, i.e. the approval of the zoning request, detrimentally affect other property in the neighborhood? Staff, increased traffic, lighting, noise, et cetera, as compared to the 30 single-family zero lot line residences already permitted? Staff says yes. Do we concur?
Agreed.
Agree. Thirteen, would the request be consistent with the purpose of the zoning district classification and the intent and purpose of these regulations? Staff, yes. The proposed use provides for medium-density multifamily development along an interial street. Concur?
Agreed.
Yes.
Yes. Fourteen, is the request in conformance with the comprehensive plan and does it further enhance the implementation of the plan? Staff, yes. Chapter five, Housing Diversity in the Comprehensive Plan, specifically addresses the offering of housing choices through the use of a planned unit development. The Comprehensive Plan recommends that the city and developers use the PUD tool where feasible to provide greater housing choice through the mixture of small lot, single-family structures, less than 10,000 square feet, attached housing, town homes, multifamily structures, and others within each development. Additionally, the Comprehensive Plan specifically states there are residents who would prefer to live in another type of housing product, i.e. different from single-family residential. Examples include, but are not limited to, older residents who have moved to Andover to be closer to children and grandchildren, residents who have moved to Andover for the schools but want to stay in Andover after their children have left the school system. Staff said yes. Concur?
Yep.
Yes?
Yes.
Fifteen, what is the nature of the support or opposition to the request? Staff, opponents fear loss in property values in the area and increased traffic.
Concur.
Concur?
Yes.
Sixteen, are there any informational materials or recommendations available from knowledgeable persons or experts, which would be helpful in its evaluation? Staff, based on the facts presented at the time of this writing, staff knows of no reason not to approve of the amendment. The applicant has provided a traffic report prepared by a licensed engineering professional that addresses the concerns for traffic. No factual evidence has been submitted to support the fear of loss in property value. Evidence may be presented at the public hearing tonight, provides proof of property value impact or additional traffic issues, and other matters that negatively reflect on the request. But staff had not received it prior to this evening. The applicant has provided a market analysis prepared by a professional accounting and consulting firm that indicates the subject will be located adjacent to Teradyne Country Club and will be a complementary use to it and the surrounding good-quality, single-family housing stock. In addition, the subject will create a positive impact upon the neighborhood, providing a newly constructed, senior rental housing development in excellent condition. Concur?
Yes. Yes.
And seventeen, by comparison, does the relative gain to the public health, safety, and general welfare outweigh the loss in property value, or the hardship imposed upon the applicant by not approving the request?
That's a tough one.
Mm-hmm, always is.
Yeah. Yeah, his answer, yes or no. I don't, I don't know. It, there's a, there's a loss if you can't develop it.
Right.
And there's a, there's certainly some public opinion here that is shared, shared their concerns.
But it does impact the income to the city and.
Public health, safety, and general welfare outweigh the loss of property value or the hardship imposed. Well, we hopefully there isn't a loss in public property value. Oh, if we don't approve it, okay.
Make sure the commissioners understand when we say no, what the meaning is, when we say yes, what the meaning is. Because the question is, you're weighing two, you're weighing both sides, but it's not always apparent the way you should answer.
It's not, the clarification is that this is not a yes or no answer. It's a, it's a weighing of, of the factors.
Yes. So you're not going to hold us to the yes or the no then, right?
I'd just say that it's a difficult one to answer and I think we ought to stay silent on it.
I would agree.
Okay. It is, it is considered. Don't have an answer, but it is considered.
What, one thing, you know, I, I know we're still deliberating here, even though we're getting through the 17 findings and factors. But one thing I think would be really beneficial of the, of the development, and they've already stated they intend to do so, is, is architectural controls that are, I think it would be appropriate to impose architectural controls that are similar and very compatible with the, the architecture that's at the course already. I don't know that.
That is the plan.
I don't know that the PUD covers that in a written format significant enough to make sure that the site plan review committee has something to go by. I think, I think it would be very helpful for the, the, the community, the neighboring properties to know that it's developed in a way that uses similar brick or similar architectural elements that is in keeping. And I don't think the developer probably has a, plans to do it less high-quality, but I think it'd be a, a good faith effort on our part to let the, let the site plan review committee know that this is what we intend for this property to, how it's going to develop. So any comments on that?
I don't know how you word that, but if we can do that, then yes.
I think it just, it needs to be complimentary to the architecture and the.
Yes.
Materials that are used on the existing facilities.
Well, the, the pictures they have shown, the drawings, it shows that that is, but I think that might be worth adding into the. Match the clubhouse, you know, or, or the other housing around there. Okay, who's the one to make this motion?
Who's got the numbers?
So we have things that.
Three.
Would support it would be.
Five, yep.
Nine. And 14. Anybody else concur on that? And if you have any others that you think would be appropriate?
I think that would do.
I'll, I'll second that motion when you get it. I got the Gary. Gary's being quiet tonight.
No, I'll second it. Go ahead.
Okay. You're making it?
You go ahead, Lynn.
Keep making it as you will?
No, you are.
You are?
I am?
Yeah. Okay, I gotta, I gotta write those numbers down there. Okay, what's those numbers again? Three?
Five.
Five, nine, and 14. Okay. Okay, got it. Having considered evidence at the hearing and the factors to evaluate the rezoning application, I, Lynn Heath, move that we recommend to the governing body that case number Z 2017-06B modified and approved to change the zoning district classification from R2 to R4 based on the findings on the planning commission as recorded in the summary of this hearing. And those findings are three, five, nine, and 14.
Do we need to add the other?
Yeah.
Oh.
80% 55-plus?
Oh, well, that's, okay. And the other restrictions. other restrictions that they've placed on this, the, um, we got a proposed use to one hundred and twenty-five age restricted, multifamily resident dwelling with swimming, tennis, racquetball, similar recreational, and eighty percent of the residents fifty-five and older.
With the parking ratio? You gonna do a parking ratio?
We already, I thought that was already in there. One point seven?
No.
Not in your motion.
One point seven plus parking ratio.
Is that, that's what your motion's gonna say?
And the access?
And architectural controls?
Oh, the, yeah, and make the architecture of the apartment building similar to, uh, the, um, the golf court, the golf, uh-
Think of complimentary design.
Yeah, make it similar to the golf, um, clubhouse. Yes. Anything else that I forget?
Did I understand you to say that the use of the parcel was limited to a hundred and twenty-five dwelling unit, multiple family complex?
Yes.
Limited to?
No, single family, no duplexes, no nothing else.
No boarding houses, no rooming houses.
Okay.
All right. Is that what I understood?
Well, yeah, I was just reading what it said right here on this application. Hundred and twenty-five age restricted multifamily residential dwelling units.
Okay.
That's what, and then eighty percent have to be over fifty-five. And that's part of the PUD approval.
Wait, do we have a second yet?
I'd second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. I have a substitute motion I like to add to that, in that it would be to add single family housing to that, multifamily housing. So if, if for whatever reason they choose not to do the multifamily housing, we could still do single family and the neighborhood is, is agreeable with single family over there.
R two, and go back to R two. Yes.
Well, it'd just be restricted to, you would still have R four, but you would be restricted to either single family use or the hundred and twenty-five age restricted multifamily use.
So I, I would ask you, Les, that single family is already allowed by definition in R four. Is the purpose of the, uh, motion to exclude anything we don't want and then, uh, add the conditions we want them to meet?
The way I understand the most, motion, there would be three permitted uses. A hundred and twenty-five units or less, multiple family with age restrictions, eighty percent of the occupants being fifty-five years of age or older. Single family residences or, and/or swimming, tennis, racquetball, and similar recreational club activities and related clubhouse.
That, that is correct, that's-
And the one point seven minimum.
And the substantive motion included his items that he previously listed. The parking ratio that was quoted, as well as the complimentary architectural controls, uh, to the Terradyne Country Club.
I guess what I'm asking is, do they need to specifically add allowing single family housing?
They do because the, the original motion limited specifically to multiple family dwellings.
Everybody clear?
So you have an amendment to the motion?
To add in single family as a allowable use to the, the parcel, which the parcel is one B. It'll, everybody clear with this?
That, I think what they'll do is if they, they'll go one way or the other, they're not going to have this combination of both.
Certainly, but it gives them, they can still develop a single family involvement like they can today, as well as this multifamily development. I think when you start hemming things in, and the reason why I put that in there is when you start hemming things in so tight with restrictions, we'll end up talking about this again next week, or the week after that.
Well, but I'd want it to revert back to R two and not stay R four, if they're going to make it a single family dwelling.
If, if I understand right, Lynn?
Yeah.
You've effectively done that.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I need to-
So he has a motion to make an amendment to?
Do we need to?
We need to vote on that first.
He needs to accept the amendments, the second order needs to accept the amendments, and then you
Yeah.
vote on the whole thing. Amendments to the motion.
Can't vote on mine until we vote on the amendment. Yes. Have we got a second?
I'll second the amendment.
Okay. All in favor?
And just, just so everybody's clear, we're, we're adding single family as, as an option.
Yes. So we're voting on the amendment first?
Yes, have to.
All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Yes.
Now we have another motion.
Not my motion.
No, his motion.
Which is amendment.
We have a motion and a second by
Yeah.
Okay, yes, and all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Everybody say aye?
Nope.
No.
And those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Two nays.
Three, two. Still passed.
Okay. Absolutely.
In the notice area.
Okay. So, um, this case will be forwarded on to the governing body by the planning commission, with the planning commission's recommendations as, with a written summary of the hearing for consideration at the regular hearing on January ninth, twenty eighteen, and this is in the same room here at seven P M. Recording of this video will be retained for at least sixty days after the final determination is completed on the case. Protest petitions against this change of zoning or special use may be directed, uh, to the city clerk fourteen days after tonight, i.e. January twenty, uh, sorry, January second, at four thirty P M. If, if there's a properly signed and notarized protest petitions and accurate legal prescriptions from the owners of record of twenty percent or more of the real property, uh, the proposed zoned, rezoned area, the owners of record or twenty percent or more of the total real property within the official area of notification, both inside and outside the city, not counting street rights away, then such a change shall not be passed except by a three quarters vote by all the members of the governing body. Thank you all for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
I, I just want to make sure the audience knows that the petition you've put together, the city attorney has told me is valid the way it's put together. It's just a matter of getting the correct signatures in order to force the, the council to have five of six vote for it.
If you could give a staff after the case, after the hearing, we, we still have some more cases to go.
Yeah, he's gonna, she's gonna head it in there. Yeah, let, let's take a five minute break.
I'll take a motion for a five minute break.
We can't, we can't do that. I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Interesting case on your first line.
Huh?
That was not a building factor for me.
No.
That was not a building factor for me. I consider being a bit, yeah, to the area, but I think the scope, the size is right. Yeah. I appreciate what staff does. Staff gets lots of people on that one, first you have there, and, uh, I was Rodman for El Dorado on summer, and, uh, nobody, you know, you don't get paid a lot, take a little bit of abuse there.
These guys.
I think you read the whole, and I just read, I got to be part of it.
It's supposed to be a fly, I unfortunately, I, if I say, please listen. That's how we come to the decision, because I don't like intimidation or something else, it's involved. But one thing I would say they should have done at the beginning was say, how many people are there? So you find out how many people are there. Still limited to time, but we only had two people and you had an hour. There's something you can say to the viewers who are around here. You guys, you're only, you say, okay, she can have three minutes, and this is fact, and a lot more, and that's, and that forty, forty-five hours, and that would be appropriate. People did a pretty nice job, as you can tell, that they were just, they're just people, they're not professionals, but, uh, yeah.
I know, I know, I've worked, I've worked on it every year, and it seems to know the issue of the world, too, so, uh,
if anyone's here. No, that's right. No, not what everybody says, you're not a bad guy. Thanks, bro. Yeah, that's my head. Oh, go ahead, go ahead. She would tell you, thank you very much. The size of trees around there. Imagine those trees.
But somebody said the shoes, I agree, the shoes are pretty. So they just went to unlock vehicles?
Well, they were locked, I hope that one, we got all the two.
Oh, really? Good, they didn't. Oh, I don't know. Meaning, sort of, the rest is still, so what? Trying. So you have a near cam on your house? You got pretty good pictures.
It's important. So.
Ten minutes, or a five minute break?
Yeah. Well, I, I'm still thirsty, though.
I gave my, well, I gave my-
I'm still thirsty, though. All right, I think we're just about ready.
Right there.
All right, so we are back and it's been a little, little more than five minutes, but oh, well. All right.
We need to wait for our attorney.
Who's that old guy, who's that old guy back there?
All right, so, um, we'll call to order, um, the rest of our proceedings here. So I think next in line is, uh, I need a motion to recess the planning commission and convene the board of zoning appeals.
So moved.
So we have a motion and a second. And all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. This is, um, item number eight, it's VZA V two thousand seventeen dash fourteen, a public hearing on application filed by Nathan and Angela Harby- Brecher, apologize. Requesting a variance for an increase in the maximum lot coverage area from an existing thirty-five hundred square foot limitation to five thousand square feet to allow for construction of a structure addition to the existing two-family dwelling on property zoned as R three multifamily, residential district located at four oh nine and four eleven West Gam Court, Andover, Kansas. Staff says the applicant desires to add a third dwelling unit to the existing two-family dwelling. The Cedar Park PUD allows three-family dwellings, but the PUD restricts the size of the parcel to thirty-five hundred square feet of lot coverage. And this subject property is a very large and it's very irregular shaped, and, and staff knows no reason not to approve the variance- And staff knows no reason not to approve the variance pending input from the public at the hearing here. So. With that. Have a look at some materials here. Unless, I don't know that, we need to ask you this, but is there anything new or things that you want to add that we don't already know that was in our packet?
I have nothing new and I think the, uh, memo there explained pretty well the circumstances around this case.
Okay. I did note on the site plan provided by the owner, um, agent. Let's see, I'm getting through the packet here. It goes on. A color exhibit, if I thought, with a house, oh, there it is. If you're looking at what I'm looking at, it's a yellow house with a pink addition on it.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you, uh, the only concern I had are just statement, I, I believe this, this, uh, PUD has an eight-foot side yard setback provision and, uh, Les, maybe you can correct me if that's.
That, that is correct. Brian and I looked after we talked earlier. The drawing that was submitted isn't very legible.
That's true.
I think it says eight-foot side yard.
It could say that, yeah. Well, as long as they know that we're, we're stuck with an eight-foot side yard, that's the important thing. Um, with that, are there any questions of staff on this particular case?
Or, this is for a third dwelling, correct, a, a third occupant?
Yes, a third attached dwelling.
And with a third driveway? They don't show a driveway on this.
Those, those are details we don't know. We don't, we don't have a site plan for the, the building addition. We're strictly talking about the allowable square footage.
And would that include a garage? That square footage?
Correct, that, that limitation is on the footprint of the building.
Yeah. So whether it has a garage or not, we're.
Correct.
Looking at just increasing that from thirty-five hundred to five thousand.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions of staff, if not all? Advance this agenda item, anybody, uh, the applicant or the applicant's agent care to share anything or enlighten us on anything new? Oh, okay, yes, please. Are, you're the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Please, uh, give.
Nathan Hobrictor and I have no other information to provide.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, well, just a minute, sir, we'll open up the public comment here in just a minute. So, are there any questions of the applicant? Seeing none, I'll, I'll go ahead and open up to public comment. If, uh, if you would please come forward and state your name and address and the concerns.
Uh, I'm Greg Schneider, I'm the Cedar Park HOA president and I also live in Cedar Park. And, uh, my only, my only concern is, is the parking situation. If the driveway is put in that cul-de-sac, that cul-de-sac is a, is a short cul-de-sac. And there's already, you know, the parking's tight anyway. And I don't, I can't see where he's gonna have the driveway, the driveway concerns me, if it's gonna be off, if it's gonna come out to Glancy, then it won't be an issue, but if it's gonna, if the, if the driveway's gonna come off into the cul-de-sac, you know, it's, it's just a parking situation. I get calls from other people that live in cul-de-sacs and that's one thing, they, they'll have somebody park a pickup or something in that cul-de-sac and it'll be in front of their resident and then I get a call and.
Sure.
Complain about, uh, you know, and I can't really, I'm, so when I call the police, they tell me, well, as long as the car's parked correctly and licensed correctly, they can't do anything about it, so.
Those are valid concerns, um, I think what, you know, I might suggest is that we can make sure that there's, uh, four off-street parking stalls with this addition and, uh, I think that's a standard that we have with most of these, is that right? Us?
Well, you're, you're right on point there and to answer his question, the driveway could not go on to Glancy Street because this property doesn't touch Glancy Street. All of the lot frontage is on the cul-de-sac.
Correct.
You can see there, the red perimeter.
So Les, would the driveway have to come out into the circle of the cul-de-sac or could it be like under that corner point there?
On the neck of like the cul-de-sac?
Can it merge with the other driveway?
It could, Gary, come all the way out to the straightaway approaching the cul-de-sac, but I think if, what I'm hearing Mr. Schneider here is that's probably.
Prime parking?
Taking up some parking spaces where if it was added on to the existing driveway.
That's what I'm.
Give up less on-street parking.
I visited the site twice, just driving by and it is a tight little cul-de-sac, I'm concerned about the size of the, the addition and the location on that side of the building.
If there, uh, with that question, if there's two cars parked in that circle, in the circle, can you still go in there and turn around and make a, a U-turn and come back out?
Um, I don't know for a fact, it, it's, it's a small circle, I mean, it's.
Maybe, um.
Yeah.
Is there any more questions of the, the speaker?
Is there, uh, no, I'm, I'm sorry.
I might ask the owner, are you, would you be willing to guarantee four off-street parking stalls on that garage or driveway there? Make sure, just make sure there's enough for four, four stalls?
Four stalls off-street, yes.
Yeah, I think that would sort of suffice and it looks, I mean, looks like there's enough geometry to make that happen. And if the house needs, that part of the house needs to shift backwards to do so, so be it.
Yeah, I would just say, one of my other, just driving in the neighborhood, that, you know, there are other three house, or three dwelling houses out there, but usually what I have noticed was is that two of them would share one driveway.
Yeah.
And so that's gonna be the question here is, is that there's not really, you know, is that driveway option?
Have you got the design completed enough, will the garage be? Where would the entrance to the garage be? Do you know that?
Based on my preliminary work that I've submitted, the garage would be on the north end of the subject property.
Yes, but where will the entrance to that garage be?
It would be on, into Gam Court, I have not laid out the exact.
Well.
Dimensions.
Well, I'm getting it. Will it, can it come in from, go in on the same driveway and, and turn right?
That is not, as I'm, have it in my, um, preliminary plans right now, that is not the intention.
Okay.
That would, um, that would indicate like.
Going in from that direction?
No.
I think if we just require that he has four off-street parking stalls, that'll, you know, resolve the issue.
Okay.
In my mind.
Will he? Now, will that unit have a separate coming down here?
A separate driveway, yeah, I think that's what he's saying, is it have a separate driveway?
The way I anticipated, it will have a separate driveway.
Okay. Okay.
So, yes, four, four parking.
Are there, are there any other concerns from the public? Yes, okay, if you could, please come forward.
I'm Janine Porter and I own several properties in the area, I have four oh four and four oh six West Gam Court, which would be adjacent to that, not on the side where the pink thing is, but on the other one. I also have two properties across the street on thirteen thirteen and thirteen fifteen North Glancy and thirteen thirty-one and thirty-three North Glancy. So I'm very familiar with how horrible the parking is and there are triplexes there. There's one on the corner there on Glancy, obviously on pretty much a straightaway. There's also one back in a cul-de-sac, but if you, I submit to you to go drive that and see how that parking's gonna be, we spent, I used to live in Teradyne, so this was a very strange thing going on with me, talking about the parking, but we spent about forty-five minutes talking about the parking there and there will be with that unit, seven double-car garages in this tiny little circle. There's no place to park on the street and when my, when I blow out the sprinkler systems, you can't turn. It is horrible. So if you're adding another, and you know, people wanna live in the cul-de-sac, I, I owned thirteen thirteen, the Glancy runs first. People wanna be in the cul-de-sac because the kids could be off the street and it's safer. It's, this has totally ruined that because that's not gonna happen, we had all these cars and, and it's not safe anyway, but you add another driveway, it's a mess and so, and there's a water main right there, so I don't know how all that's working, you guys with the city can figure that out, but, um, I don't know how it works, Mike Ferguson also owns three units, he owns some adjacent ones, I think he submitted a letter to the city saying, yeah, we've lived it, I've lived it for ten years, it's, that parking is horrible. So I applaud you who have driven past it and seen it because people don't just have two cars anymore. You know, and then we've got them parking on Glancy and everything else, so I'm also on the board at Cedar Park, so, um, this hasn't become, um, come across the architectural control. We didn't know anything about it until we got the letter from the city, so I don't know how all that works in the end, but, um, that's all I have to say, I really think it's gonna be a hindrance to me renting, first of all, and, um, it's not gonna be real pretty with the parking, so.
And I'm sorry, did you say you own the property just to, around that cul-de-sac, kinda to the north?
I own way in the back because people like to live way in the back because it's way in the back there, so four oh four and four oh six, um, that one and then right across the street, um, on Glancy. So, those two that kind of go between the cul-de-sac, I own both of those.
Okay.
So I have six units, so back in that corner, I have two of the units and I have a couple, you know, and they're, in their sixties and they have four cars, they don't have any kids. So, you combine that times seven driveways, double-car garages, they're all double-car garages, it's a mess. So.
So your tenants park on the street at times?
Um, they park in there, well, with four cars, no, they park, well, when they have to, when they have company, they're all parked everywhere, it's a mess and the buses go through there, you know, on Glancy, so that's also an issue because you got people parking on the street and you have the buses going through because that's, they drop off on Lake Point and then they turn that corner and go that way. So, it's very congested, plus the turn there doesn't help at all either, it's not a straightaway street.
Are there, are all the duplexes, uh, built on, or all the lots built on in there, Les?
No, there's one lot.
There's one lot left?
Two, two lots, yeah.
Two lots, so someone could buy that and put it in a parking lot?
You'd have to charge for it, maybe.
The one supposedly is gonna be built on here pretty soon.
Okay, well.
Yep.
But, you know, I would just submit that it, it's not gonna get any prettier with the addition of another double-car garage, no matter how you cut it and, that's why people like cul-de-sacs. Any other questions?
None here. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else?
Any other questions or concerns, yes, sir? Yeah, feel free to come up to the, yeah.
She just has to, she's writing your name and address down and all that stuff.
Just to address a couple items that I heard, there are two other, um, cul-de-sacs in that development that have rentals. Um, there's a cul-de-sac on West Ellis and it's, is, um, has two triplexes and two duplexes and it is, um, seventeen point five percent coverage. There's a cul-de-sac on Odell Court, it has three pla, it has one triplex and one duplex, it is eighteen percent, point eight percent lot coverage. The proposed one, based on the maximum that I'm asking for, and that does include a significant amount of cushion, would be seven, or fifteen point seven percent cushion. So, as far as the, the coverage of the, um, building, th- this cul-de-sac would be the lowest. Now. There is another triplex on Glancy. It has thirty-one point five percent coverage. Now, to, um, address the parking issue, the, um, Mrs. Ferguson indicated one of her tenants has four cars. He's a mechanic and he's rebuilding one of those cars, so there's, there's that issue. You know, if you look at the way it's designed, that's why there's four off-street parking. Two inside, two outside. And I believe the way it is laid out, it could be a, an extra-long driveway to allow for additional parking.
Yeah.
That hasn't been addressed yet. Addressing the concern that it has not gone through the HOA notification process yet, I've, I've chosen to get, um, before I even go down that path, to get drawings, to get permissions and all that. I wanna find out if it's possible.
Sure.
From the city before I plow other ground.
Sure.
And that's, and that's, and that's why I've not notified anybody else, this, this is my first step.
Yeah.
In a long process.
Yeah, one of the first things I, I saw when I looked at it was, and I've had issues with neighbors and stuff, is, is drainage. You're now putting another building up there and when it rains, water's gonna be coming off that roof, where's it gonna be going? You know, so you have to consider that, you know, when you're building your property and the drainage and how that's gonna affect your neighbors and where's it, is it gonna go out in the cul-de-sac or?
The way the, uh, lot lays today, the drainage would go to the, uh, southwest and follow the contour of, of the land there. Um, there was a question earlier about the, uh, setback. It is a little hard to read maybe on your copy, but if the building is this size here, there is a, it does meet the required eight-foot setback.
Yeah.
Is there a reason it's four hundred square feet larger than the other two?
Um, it, this would, um, have additional living space in it and this is, um, the rough plan. I just kinda drew it, had the, had my, uh, the guy I was working with draw it out, kinda what a maximum would look like.
Is there, is there something restricting it from being built on the other side of that?
On the other side, there is actually a twenty-five-foot utility easement across the back and the way the, between the utility easement.
Yeah.
And the street setback, it, um.
Yeah.
It doesn't fit in there.
Nope.
Land use, that's actually where I'd prefer to have it.
Yeah.
But the setbacks and the easements do not allow for that.
Yep, I can see that now.
How many bedrooms is the proposed property?
Uh, it would be four.
Four bedrooms?
Yes.
Les, the other triplexes in that area, are they all restricted to the thirty-five hundred square feet, do we know?
Yes, they are. This is, this has come up in the past, uh, they had mentioned there's one vacant lot that showed on that aerial photo. We have a development plan for it that is exactly thirty-five hundred square feet, they actually had to cut living space off of their original plan to get down to thirty-five hundred.
Ouch. I think there's a lot of storage units out there, people put their extra stuff in the storage units instead of a garage, that's would help a lot, but. And we're, repair their cars elsewhere, but, uh, I, I don't have any issues with this. I think it makes good sense and, you know, I don't think it matters if you're in a multifamily neighborhood or you're gonna have cul-de-sack parking issues, I know we do in my neighborhood. And, uh, especially when you get six. especially when you get six cars in a household, or, or four cars in a household. So, I think that's just something that, uh, maybe the landlords can work out.
Well, what this zoning, or making it, uh, setbacks, because, but that's, they've got other ones like that. It's the extra square footage. It's a big.
The size of it is.
Huh?
The size of it is.
Yes, that's the si, that's what I'm saying, the size of it. They went from thirty-five hundred to forty-eight ninety-eight.
Well, they're at three now. Just under three thousand existing, but.
But this allows them to put, uh, cars in a garage. I mean, that's.
Not there, we got.
On the additional.
Allows them to have a four-bedroom.
And a garage.
There, we got a garage.
Does it give an unfair advantage over what's just been approved, sticking to the thirty-five hundred?
Yeah, couldn't.
It does.
Yes. Well, I think this, the merits of this one is a, it's a unusually large lot, and, uh.
Yeah, but it's all one-sided.
Yeah, that's.
You got all this open area, and, and I realize the easements there, but, I mean, you're cramped. You're cramping the boundaries on the, uh, on the east.
Well.
I mean, I know you're within.
It's gonna have to be eight feet, 'cause they're.
If they chose less, if they chose, could they put a, just a parking driveway area in that space that's devoid of anything over there?
Absolutely.
So, it's just uncovered parking area.
To the we, uh, on the west side you're talking about?
Yeah, just right where they've got a little square.
Bill, I think I'm following your, your train of thought there, that the additional square footage might allow for more cars than if the building were smaller. I went through that same deliberation in my mind. We would not be here tonight if this applicant chose to build vertically instead of horizontally, which wouldn't be off the table.
Yeah. So, I. Well, it'd break with the existing structures there if they went, you're saying to second story, right?
Right, if they were to add a second story, we wouldn't be having this conversation. We wouldn't be hearing this case tonight. And the result would be the same.
Yeah.
All right, if there's no other comment, we do still have some more items to attend to.
Yep.
Uh, in the sake of, of speeding along into the midnight hour.
Some of you guys gotta work tomorrow.
Yeah. So.
I'm not retired yet.
We have a variance report. We have, uh, some items to attend to. So, we have five, four items. Everybody following, does this evidence demonstrate? I see in your report.
Done all these stuffs.
Oh, yeah, I guess.
That's the next, they put them in the wrong order.
Yeah, I see that.
Yeah, I did.
So, the usual housekeeping items. Any disqualifications on this case?
Nope.
No, done here. And do feel, if you feel compelled, just tell me out front, so. Uh, and, uh.
I'll, I'm keeping him straight.
Yes, and we have had no ex parte communication on this.
Nope.
All right.
No.
And so, this, this case was notified, um, and published in the Butler County Times Gazette on November twenty-fifth, twenty-seventeen, and notices were mailed to, uh, the applicant and eight owners of record of real property in the area of notification on November twenty-second, twenty-seventeen. The record shows that at least twenty days, twenty days has elapsed from the publication and mailing dates, and so I'll declare that proper notification has been given. So, we've discussed everything.
We've had the comments, uh.
We've had some comments.
Public comments. Any other comments?
We can close, close the public hearing. Now, we have a variance report. We're getting through it.
Oh, I know. The motion there, or not?
Well, I think we need to make sure we demonstrate that this
Okay.
is appropriate here, if we all indeed agree it's appropriate. Uh, the particular physical surroundings, shape, topographical, uh, condition of the specific property involved would result in a practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship upon the owner, lessees, or occupant are dis, as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if these provisions of these regulations were literally enforced. And.
Because the subject property is irregularly shaped lot, which has more than twice the minimum lot area for a proposed structure, and the required setbacks will be accomplished.
And I would agree wholeheartedly with that statement.
Agree.
Number two, the request for a variance is not based exclusively upon the desire of the owner, lessee, or occupant, uh, or applicant to make more money out of the property. Uh, well, I'd assume that this property would generate more money, but it's gonna cost them more money to put the addition on.
Yep.
I think that's a fair statement.
Yes.
Number three, the granting of the variance will not materially be detrimental or injurious of other properties or improvements in the neighborhood in which the subject property is located. We've heard about some issues with parking. However, I, I do agree that, uh, with, we could still achieve this by going vertical and we'd have the same issue. Um, and there is land still available on this lot to put a little parking area if they so choose, so that's the only thing I could think of that would be injur, injurious to the neighboring properties and, um.
Still have to meet the building setbacks.
And we are gonna meet the building setbacks. So, number four, the variance will not impair the adequate supply of light, air, or adjacent property substantially, increase the congestion of public streets or roads, increase the danger of fire, endanger the public safety, or substantially diminish or impair the property values within the neighborhood. I think the key word is substantially here. I don't know that this one unit is gonna substantially change, uh, the character of the neighborhood that much with regard to the things we've talked about. Um, and again.
One or two events per day.
For all the reasons we've stated before. So, we have some specific items to meet. Um, anybody else wanna take on these last five items? Bill, you want?
Okay. The board may grant a variance upon specific written findings of fact based upon the particular evidence presented at the hearing, so that all five of the conditions required by KSA twelve dash seven five nine E have been met, which are listed below. If any of the conditions cannot be met, the conditions need, needs to be reworded from a positive to a negative statement, and the variance not granted. One, that the variance requested arises from such condition which is unique to the property in question and which is not ordinarily found in the same zoning district, and is not created by an action or actions of the property owner or the applicant. Because the additional limit to the building size is unique to the Cedar Park PUD parcel two, and because the subject property is an irregularly shaped lot, which has more than twice the minimum lot area for the proposed structure, and the required setbacks can be.
Yep.
Yes. Two, that granting of the variance will be, will not adversely affect the rights of adjacent property owners or residents. Because the subject property is an irregularly shaped lot, which has more than twice the minimum lot area for the proposed structure, and the required setbacks can be accomplished. The applicant could build the addition vertically in compliance with the building coverage limitation, but a multi-story building would not be in character with the neighborhood. Correct?
Agreed.
Three, that strict application of the provisions of these regulations, from which a variance is requested, will constitute unnecessary hardship upon the property owner represented in the application. Again, because the subject property is an irregularly shaped lot, which has more than twice the minimum lot area for the proposed structure, and the required setbacks can be accomplished. The applicant could build the addition vertically in compliance with the building coverage limitation, but a multi-story building would not be in character with the neighborhood. Yes?
Yes.
Four, that the variance desired will not adversely affect the public health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, or general welfare. Because the subject property is an irregularly shaped lot, which has more than twice the minimum lot area for the proposed structure, and the required setbacks can be accomplished.
Yes?
Yep.
Five, that granting the variance desired will not be opposed to the general spirit and intent of these regulations. Because the subject property is an irregularly shaped lot, which has more than twice the minimum lot area for the proposed structure, and the required setbacks can be accomplished.
Concur.
Agreed.
Yes.
Okay, all right. I'm prepared to make a motion.
You got it?
Having considered the evidence of the hearing and determined that the findings of, of fact and the variance report, um, have been found to exist that support all five conditions set out in section ten ten, uh, sorry, ten one oh seven D one of the zoning regulations and KSA twelve seven five nine E. I, Brian Lindaback, uh, chairman, authorized that I sign the resolution granting the variance for the case number BZA V two thousand seventeen dash fourteen, as requested.
I'll second it.
We.
I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Was there any modification for parking that we needed to do?
Hmm.
For the op, for off, or no? I apologize.
It is a code requirement, so I don't know, Les, do you? Uh, four off-street is a code requirement. Only two.
Okay.
Well, I would modify my motion to include four off-street parking stalls. If everybody's okay with that?
Yes.
As modified.
They already, they got four right there, what, uh, what they got already.
Well, this would be for the addition, uh, the addition that they're adding on.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. So, now, is there a second?
I'll second it.
And William seconds it? And we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. And motion passes. Uh, closing remarks, um, this resolution will be prepared and made available to applicant by December thirty-first. And if anybody has aggrieved by this decision, a further appeal can be made to the district court to determine its reasonableness within thirty days after the resolution is signed and filed with the zoning administrator. Thank you all.
Make a motion to adjourn the board of zoning appeals and reconvene the planning commission.
Second. We have. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 I'm trying to, trying to move along. All right, so we have one last item on the, uh,
Yes.
hearing. So, we have Hodges' fourth addition, final plat. Uh, we heard it at subdivision committee, as you have before you, some committee, uh, minutes. And the applicant desires to replat two existing parcels on North Main Street in order to redevelop the property with a cluster multifamily development. Uh, staff knows, uh, staff in the subdivision conven, committee and the utility providers have reviewed the plat and knows no reason not to approve the plat. I do believe we have the plat in front of us. Probably in its final form, I imagine. And there it is.
Yeah, I think I've been on this before. This one we looked at before?
Uh, no. No, you, well, you saw the zoning, zoning item. Can we have the agent or applicant? We'll talk to Les if he need anything.
Tom Ballman, part of the TCB Ventures, that's going to, uh, develop this piece of property.
Okay. And any questions of the applicant on, on his, uh, efforts here with the final the, uh, plat? If you guys do not have any questions, we'll just.
This is an empty lot?
It was two lots and we've combined them to make one.
Okay.
Yeah, and.
They're empty now.
They're empty now. You can drive by. The houses have been cleared away.
And what do you plan on doing in the future, then?
Uh, we'd like to put a private street in there and put about fourteen doorways, um, with a multifamily type of structure.
And Gary, the zoning for that multifamily was heard at the last meeting, if you recall.
Okay, that, all right. And you'll have all, since, since, since parking is the topic of the night amongst other things, and multifamily, uh, you'll have all the, the parking on, on your lot?
Yes, all the parking will be on our lot. We, uh, plan to take a road from, uh, Old Main Street back to the west and then put a hammerhead, uh, as per whatever the fire marshal decides he wants for, uh, the width and the, uh, length of it.
Okay. I don't have any extra things to add here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anyone want to move to approve or otherwise?
Well, the they have other restrictions they have to go by about the number of units and square footage and all that. Okay.
Yep.
I make a motion, I, are we supposed to be making a motion on this?
Yeah, I've been, yeah, we need to.
We approve this, this request.
All right, we have a motion and a.
Second here.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? Motion passes. Yeah, I think there's just. We gotta schedule twenty eighteen.
Yep, back next month. What you talking about?
Yeah. I'm not on there. I don't have to come.
We gotta get a couple names and take one off. Yeah, oh shoot, we already covered that.
Yeah.
That'd be taken care of. We got a new vice chair. We got a new secretary. Shoot, look at that.
She's got a lot of red lines.
Dana's got her work cut out.
The only thing I saw was, uh, the filing plat, uh, dead, deadline for the plat, um, that's, uh, the first. So, that's a holiday. Which I don't know if you're gonna have any plots coming on the second, or whenever that might be. Probably not a big deal. Maybe I'll just.
Zero one, zero one.
When do you wanna take le, uh, cases in, Les, on the second? For if. Okay.
Twenty-ninth?
Twelve, twenty-nine?
Thirty.
Seventeen. Okay. Just that one item? Got a lot of meetings. All right.
Our city council liaison wasn't here? Okay, just our, our fire department person was here, huh?
And.
Purposely here?
Yes.
Was he purposely here for that one part?
Yes.
Okay.
And we've lost, uh, officially, have we, we've lost, officially lost, uh, three members or two members?
They have an official in time, but, uh,
At least three.
And, you know, procedurally, to try to have a resign, we wanna appoint.
Warrington has resigned. Bender and Bean, terms have expired and they've expressed that they don't intend to be reappointed.
So, we're.
And what about Stephanie?
We're, we're it. We're floating right now, is what you're saying.
Stephanie's term doesn't expire until next year.
I think she expressed interest not to
Yes.
participate either, right?
Family, those things.
All right. So, we need three, well, we need three more?
You want eight?
Yeah, Stephanie, we need somebody from outside the city.
Oh.
That's right.
Do have strong interest in people, I think.
Good. Okay.
Okay.
So, just a couple items to revise on this, and you've got those noted, and so we can approve the calendar for twenty eighteen with, with those modifications.
With corrections. I make the motion we approve with corrections. With corrections, I make the motion we approve with corrections.
And.
I'll second it.
And I'll call the vote, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you.
Member items.
Oh. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays.
Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas and.
I make a motion we adjourn.
No, 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 wait.
Oh, wait a minute.
Who's gonna train me to be secretary?
Oh, the guy right next to me. It's really, it's really tough.
You'll have to come in every now and then on a Friday morning at six o'clock to sign papers.
Yep.
I hope you sure got all those names, I've been trying to write everybody's names down, I've been trying to write down who's making motions and seconds and.
I have a member.
The duties are pretty easy.
Oh, I'm sure they are.
Signing on plats to attest to Brian's signature.
I have a member item, thank you, this was well put together for what we, what we had to deal with tonight.
Yeah, there was a lot, a lot of good information there, made it a lot easier. It's a tough decision.
That was very tough.
They're all, they're all tough, but that was, uh, especially difficult.
Well, it, it's, it's still not done, there's.
Far from it, I think.
Yeah.
All right.
Just passed it off.
I appreciate that, making it my first meeting here.
Welcome, welcome.
Yeah, let's, let's just hang out for another ten minutes, call it good.
Call it.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, I made the motion, so we're done.
We're done.
Second.
And approved.